Good evening. This is the Monday, November 9th, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody else in the audience tonight recording this meeting? Seeing none, can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have on the agenda for tonight, and we have a kind of a busy night, so we'll move right along here. Under public comments, I have three people. Christine Herbert from 15 Elizabeth Drive. Would you care to come up to the podium, please?
Um, who do I ask?
Right up to the podium, that'd be great. Now just identify yourself for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Christine Herbert. I live at 15 Elizabeth Drive in Auburn.
Is that microphone okay for her, please?
Okay. Just not familiar with doing this. I'm here because I'm in search of a remedy for a problem that affects the residents and abutters of Elizabeth Drive, the neighborhood known as Deatrac Estates. Last week, while walking my dog, I came upon the owner of Lot 10, Cutting Down Trees, which is 16 Elizabeth Drive. I have knowledge of the previous events pertaining to this Lot 10 and Lot 9 due to many meetings with the planning board back in 2008. In 2008, a cease and desist order was issued to the previous owner, and he was ordered to correct a wetlands violation. I have a copy of that here. This is the cease and desist order. There also has been a request to divide the land into multiple house lots. It was not allowed due to the covenants of our neighborhood, which state one house per lot, that is regardless of the size of the lot. My neighborhood is protected by a set of covenants I have here, the covenants of Deatrac Estates. Mr. Raffer said he had a logging permit on this property, which in fact he does. It was approved by the assessor on October 16th of 2015. This allows for a change in the land use to a Chapter 61. It takes effect in January of 2016. Mr. Raffer said that he has a truck waiting to come in now. He is upset that he had to contact the company to delay this cutting due to a meeting with the Conservation Department on November 18th. The covenants attached to our property were designed to protect the land and protect property owners' investments. One of the restrictions of the property is no commercial use of land or buildings. This is a residential neighborhood and should not have a change to commercial use. We as neighbors should have been notified of any change to the neighborhood. In the past, we had been notified by certified mail when the previous owner wished to get permission to make changes. When the neighbors attended the meeting and provided the documents that I have here, it was disallowed. Chapter 61 allows for the cutting of trees for profit. That is a commercial operation, I believe. The cutting is about 18 tractor trailers worth of trees, per Mr. Guila Chance of the State Forestry, and additionally, many cords of wood. It would provide Mr. Raffer with income, but it also reduces the amount of taxes that he is responsible for paying to the town of Auburn. The land Mr. Raffer owns is a protected forest, I believe, because the covenants require there to be only one house on 20-plus acres of land. That means that no additional building would be taking place. Mr. Raffer recently finished construction on his home this summer. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Joe Dragon. He's from 17 Elizabeth.
Yeah, she hit most of the spots that I wanted to talk about, and I duplicated it, so I'm good with that.
I thank you. And Mr. Mike Alexander from 12 Elizabeth. And again, just please identify yourself for the record.
Mike Alexander, 12 Elizabeth Drive. Thank you for hearing us. The only thing I wanted to add, and I know this may not be a town of Auburn issue, but the permit that was let by the state, just for information, was with an affidavit signed that all of the neighbors within 200 feet were notified, when in a town meeting just yesterday, in fact, nobody within 200 feet, no one that abuts that property, was notified in advance. And while that may not be a town of Auburn issue, we do take exception that the permit was let, we believe, ill-gotten because of the false affidavit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll turn it over to the town manager, would you please, Ms. Jacobson?
Uh, thank you. Through the chair, a couple of these issues were brought to our attention earlier. We did have a meeting today with our town planner, Matt Benoit, our assessor, Cindy Clausgrove, and our building commissioner, Caleb Moody, to go over a couple of issues. So I'll try to break them down by the issues that were raised. First of all, while the assessor's office did have to approve of the application for tax purposes, the, under Chapter 61, the state forester is the sole responsibility for approving Chapter 61A applications. So it goes directly to the state first. A property owner petitions to the state, the state, the state forester approves it and is required by law to notify our assessor, then it's been approved. Our assessor is then required to accept that approval. So the approval doesn't, the assessor has no choice but to approve it once the state has approved it. The assessor's approving it for tax purposes only. Once the state notifies the assessor that it's been classified as 61, she then has to make the changes in the computer, so that all the approvals come on a state level initially. The assessor then approves it for tax purposes, and as Ms. Herbert said, it is for a classification under forestry. After a certain amount of years, well, when the applicant, so when the property owner applies to the state, they also have to submit a tree removal plan, which I believe you were referring to. And that tree removal plan is something that the state approves of. And that also gets sent to the assessor's office as proof that it's gone through the process. So then the assessor's office is required by law to approve of this once the state makes their approval of it. So the, the separate issue is whether it's a commercial use. So that's the approval process on the, on the state level for the tax classification purposes. Under the town zoning bylaws, it is not considered a commercial use. It's actually, under our bylaws, it's listed as what you'd call an extensive use, which is forestry and harvesting of forest products. That is allowed by right in our district, residential district, of which this is. So no special permit or variance or approvals from ZBA or planning board are required. We went back and checked, there was no requirement, as the gentleman said, there's no requirement for the municipality to give any notification. There does not appear to be any requirement for the state to give notification either. I'd be curious to see, you know, we'd like to see it also, if the state is required to do it. It's not outlined in Chapter 61, that there's any type of notification process other than to the assessor. So the town does not make notification of this, there's, there's no requirement, and the town has never, has never done that. The covenants, the third issue is that there are covenants, and the covenants are a, is a document legally, it's a document between property owners, that is adhered to by the property owners in the neighborhood that the covenants affect. It is a private document, the, in this particular case, I believe there are two covenants, and I'll have our town planner speak to it in a moment, but there are two separate documents. And if there's any dispute that, generally in the covenants, it outlines in those covenants the process for resolution of dispute. It's my understanding that if there is no resolution of dispute of covenants in Massachusetts, that it's a Massachusetts Land Court matter. So it's a civil matter. So from there, it would go to if the neighbors had a concern and had a concern about the covenants and the enforcement of those covenants, the enforcement is done by the, those property owners who are party to the covenants themselves, and any dispute will go to Massachusetts Land Court. We looked today, there are several cases that have been heard that are similar with disputes regarding covenants, but that is the legal recourse for disputing anything with the covenants.
Okay.
Did I, excuse me, I just want to say, I-
I have a document, I have a document-
Would you, would you please come to the podium, please?
Sure. I have a document here that's part of the forestry plan that was submitted to you, and in this, it says, and it's signed under penalties of perjury. The state said that they don't verify this, that it's up to the landowner to do this, and that's sort of what Mr. Alexander was referring to. It was signed by Mr. Raffer that says that, I certify that I have notified the Conservation Commission and the town in which the operation is to take place, and the abutters of record within 200 feet of the area to be harvested. And he signed this. And there are some other things that it also says that he's responsible for doing. When I talked to Mr. Raffer, he said that he did not notify the Conservation Department in the town of Auburn, even though he did sign this, and I have his signature, and you would it as well. The abutters of the property, no one that is an abutter of these lots of land were notified. Not one person. There are a lot of people that would be affected by this cutting of trees, especially large quantities of trees. There are people that have had problems in the past with flooding, so it would affect their homes and cause them distress. So I feel as though this is a document that says that he did not follow the instructions.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair, correct if, if he was required under the forestry plan, the forestry plan is, is under the auspices of the state forester. So it's up, under Chapter 61, it's up to the state forester to ensure, and it actually has the right to go on a property and verify that the forestry plan is being followed. If a certification was made to the state regarding notification, then again, that would, that issue would have to be taken up with the state forester. The only documents that were required to get are the final approvals from the state, which go to our assessor's office. So the town isn't required to do the notification, the property owner has signed that he had done it. So again, I, again, I would suggest that this is, could potentially be a violation of your covenants, it could potentially be a violation of the state certification process. I don't know that, that's not our jurisdiction to make that determination.
Okay.
But I believe in your covenants, I believe there are two sets of covenants. One is regarding use, and one might be regarding roads. So there should be a section in there that talks about resolution of dispute-
Right.
-and following that process. If the resolution can't be done with the property owners, I believe you'd have to go to Land Court. The town has no jurisdiction. While we're here, though, could I just ask, if the chair will be okay, could we have our town planner come up also and speak to any other covenant issues-
Yes.
-that might be helpful? We'll give the neighborhood any documents that we have in our possession that you may need, just let us know, we do have documents for this. Matt, do you want to come up here?
Mr. Chairman, it might be best to have them, have the planner meet with the residents in the planning board room or something, where we have hearings.
Yeah, there may be a better way to do that.
Instead of taking the time now.
Yeah.
It's not the time, it's just we have timed hearings. It's not that we don't want to hear from you.
Yeah, could, Mr. Benoit, could you meet with them, possibly in a planning board room, and go over some of the questions, some of the concerns that they have?
I'd love to.
And see if we could do that, and then we can move on with our meeting.
Okay.
And thank you very much for coming forward.
Contact the state, the state, though, regarding the state issue.
I have, I have contacted them, and maybe we're totally good. The state don't, too, they just want someone to sign this, they don't verify it. They don't look for certification letters, they don't look into that. It's just, you sign it under the piece, and then further-
Thank you. Under public hearings and presentations, we have Troy's Incorporated doing business at Troy Sports Bar, 125 Oxford Street, here in town, and it's an issuance, a transfer of stock. Will those people involved, please come forward and come to the podium? And just state your name for the record and what your plan is here.
Ashley Delia and-
David Troy.
And we're planning on transferring the 40% of my stock to David Troy, who already has 60%.
I'm sorry, before we do that, I'll entertain a motion open hearing.
Motion open the hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry.
Ashley Delia and David Troy, who just simply wanted to transfer my 40% of the stock in Troy's to David, who already has 60% of the stock.
Okay, so it's just, it's not going to be a, a change of the operation or not, it's just a change in the issuance of the stock?
Exactly, yeah.
Is there any questions from the board? Mrs. Goodrich.
Who's the current manager, who's the day-to-day operation?
Me, Dave Troy, me.
And Ashley, were you the manager?
No.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? Okay. Are there any abutters here, or anybody else in the audience from, in the area of Troy's? Okay. Have you got anything else you want to add? Okay.
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting, the hearings were closed, I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion for Troy's?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance and transfer of stock.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion or comment? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay. Eastern Auto Body, we have a auto repair license at 916 Southridge Street in Auburn. I'll entertain a motion open hearing.
Motion open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just please come identify yourself and tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Good evening. My name is Richard Patavano, this is my brother William. We're planning on occupying the building at 916 Southridge Street. It's the restaurant part, not the restaurant part, which was the clam box, it's the automotive part, that half of the building. We've negotiated a lease and are ready to sign it pending your approval for us to move forward.
Anybody from the board got anything? Mr. Simontian.
In the letter from the planning board, Mr. Benoit, says the planning board, board 300 to waive the public hearing requirement, however, below that, it says, "They advise you to consider the following conditions prior to obtaining an occupancy permit. amended proposed plan to show the existing square footage of retail space and minimum parking requirements are by all approvals, conditions, and permits from all state agencies. Other town board commissions and departments." Have you done that, or the planning board do that, or?
At the planning board meeting, we did submit a, we'll call it a sketch, a hand sketch, of the parking lot and of the facility itself, and that'd be prior to the permitting process, we will submit an architectural drawing, that's being done right now as a matter of fact. That'll show the building, the layout of the building, also how it's going to meet the various fire codes, drainage codes that are having in place that weren't when the building was built originally. So, as a matter of fact, we have the architect there again tomorrow, and hope to have this resolved by the end of the week.
Now, on your application, the second question was, is the above concern an individual, co-partnership, an association, or corporation?
Corporation.
It's a corporation.
Yes, sir.
It is circled here, but I just wanted to be sure for the record that we understand what it is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is the entrance the same as it was? I know there was a business in there previously-
Yes, ma'am.
And the exit?
Yes.
Do you go around the back of the building?
Yes.
And out to the-
There, there's a front entrance, that'll be the entrance that customers would use, employees would use the entrance in the back to go and, have to come in in the morning and go leave at night.
Okay. But to the premises, the, coming off of Route 20, the-
I'm sorry.
-entrance to the property is, if you're facing the building, to the right of the building?
Correct.
And you're now exiting there, or are you going around the building?
Around the building, exit on the left-hand side.
I think it's safer that way.
Yes.
All right. We have a sketch here in front of us, and it shows that, it looks like there's possibly eight with a space to the building for parking, and then there's three parking spaces out back. Is that the amount of parking you're going to need for customers in and for, is that going to be sufficient parking?
There's actually much more parking available, but those are the only designated parking spaces that are painted lines.
Okay.
But if you look at the parking lot itself, it's four or five times that size-
Okay.
-if we need to, but yes, we expect that to be plenty. And also, there are an additional four parking spaces in the back of the building that the employees would use as well.
Okay, and that parking space is all fully paved?
Yes.
Okay, there's no dirt pavement, no dirt, hot pan back there, it's all paved?
Well, for the parking spaces, there is, it's paved, but there is a, between, there's a building behind that building-
Okay.
-that is, got the hot pan, it's not, it's a, not dirt, but it's a gravel-type setup.
Okay. And one other thing, you've met with the DCG?
Yes.
And you're aware of the requirements they had? First, the applicant shall first obtain all necessary permits and inspections from the town departments, boards, and our commissions, and the applicant shall obtain any necessary approvals from state agencies. Have you completed that yet?
We, that's what we're in the process of doing. We met, we have a letter from Caleb that outlines the various steps and permits that are needed. So the first step was, he wanted the architectural drawing and certification that it will meet the fire code regulations of today-
Okay.
-and the, and the drainage. So those two are being done now, and that's the first step. And from there, we will go to the plumbing inspector and get a permit for that work as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, Mr. Simontian.
I just have a question through the chair, I guess to the town manager. The zoning determination letter is dated September 8th, 2015, and there's some, some pretty extensive things on there. So can I assume by the date on that letter that those requirements of the zoning have been met? Or, there's board health issues on there, there's planning board issues listed in there regarding making repairs, equipment that needs to be on the site, there's things that deal with hazmat, so.
Through the chair, the zoning determination letter provided by the building commissioner, Caleb Moody, as you said, dated September 8th, identifies what the, the determinations to what approvals are going to be needed for the process. So on this case, they needed to go to the planning board, which they did, and the planning board approved on October 6th. So that letter is there. And they also needed to go to, they did not, it was not located in Aquifer, as you can see, and special permit was not applicable. So they did follow the planning board. At this point, the planning board asked the applicant to provide a plan showing the existing square footage, as you can see from the planning board letter, and to meet those conditions prior to getting the occupancy permit. So the building commissioner will have to go back out again prior to the occupancy permit being issued.
Correct.
Verify that everything's, that they're supposed to have done, that they have outlined to them, has been completed. At this point, it's not 100% completed, but you've-
Correct.
-made progress on the meetings that you've had.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. And then, an approved oil-water separator in accordance with the 2248 CMR inspected by the plumbing inspector prior to operations, so has that been done?
No, we're not ready for operations, we're at least 60 days away from that. So what's happening, as I said, the first step was to get the, an architectural study done to ensure that the two occupancies would be separated by a firewall that would meet the state code. So that's, that's literally happened this week, it'll be completed this week. From that, once that was completed, then we move on to the drainage, and that's where the plumbing inspector will be involved at that point. But we're trying to do it in steps, the, one of the other steps that we have taken is we've sent out notification by certified letter to all the abutters, that was one of the requirements, that's been done, we have the signed copies back, that the abutters were all notified, and so we're just going down the various steps and not trying to do-
No, no, I understand, I understand you have things to do. So my last question is this, and again, to the town manager, because I always bring my understanding that once this board grants the license to operate, technically, the business can operate, correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. You could grant the license conditional upon all-
Okay, so that's where I was going with that.
-local state and required approvals being, being issued. I, I think that probably goes without saying anyway, but you can put that in in writing.
That's, that's all I want. Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Are there any abutters here? Okay. Have you got anything more tonight to, on this?
No, thank you for your time, and we appreciate it.
Okay.
Motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion.
Motion made in second to close the hearing, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay. Please, Mrs. Goodrich.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, is there any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Now we have the tax classification hearing. We've got some votes to be taken.
Motion to open the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Motion made in second, open the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay. I guess we have a presentation before us tonight, explain a little bit about where we are and where we're going. Ms. Clausgrove?
I just want to kind of apologize to everyone tonight. I've been sick for about a week and a half. It's unfortunately left me with a cough and a voice that comes and goes. Mary Oliver is our assistant assessor, and she's going to be going, helping me by going through the presentation, and then I'll be here if there are any questions. Thank you. One more. Yep. Little introduction, the calculations for the tax rate and other numbers are estimated at this time for the preparation. There may be additional information, slides, and handouts that are not part of tonight's presentation. And the handouts, we do have handouts up here, and there are some additional pages that are not included in the preliminary ones that you may have gotten.
Mary, when you speak again, would you move that microphone a little bit closer? Thank you.
For the first time, I'm not loud enough in my life.
I have that problem, too.
The purpose of the classification hearing, it's Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. It allows us to shift the tax burden between property classes. These changes do, this does not change the total tax levy for the community, it simply determines the share to be borne for each class. What the, what classification hearing does not do, the classification does not determine the tax rate for the town, it only determines its distribution. Classification does not determine how much money can be raised. At town meeting, voters determine what the tax levy will be. Okay, your tax rate, tax levy is determined by town meeting appropriations and the expenditures, state and community charges. It is paid by using town revenues, which is, we get from excise, fees, enterprise, and other available funds. Your total taxable real estate and personal property, any income from state aid and reimbursements, new growth, debt exclusions, and overrides. The overview for the revaluation process, we have residential properties. The properties are adjusted annually to full and fair market value. Attributes affecting the value include styles, conditions, your interior and exterior features, and the sizes of the property. Commercial and industrial properties, values are based on the income approach to the value per the Department of Revenue requirements. For our personal property, it goes on net book value, new minus depreciation. There are four votes at the classification hearing. The residential factor, the shifts, I'm sorry, shifts the tax rate between residential and commercial properties. Open space discount, this shifts the tax burden within the residential classes to discounted open space. We have residential exemption, which shifts the burden within the residential tax classes. And then we have a small commercial exemption, this shifts the burden within the commercial and the industrial classes to be given a discount to qualifying properties. And the percents of levy for four, for the four property classes, this is just showing the, what was back in fiscal year 2000, in 2000 versus fiscal year 2016. And right now, the residential, we are up, and everybody, industrial and commercial, their values, the percentages are down a little bit, and the personal property is, is up from 2000. Your tax levy, we, we get- Your tax levy, we get, the tax levy is your levy limit and the maximum amount that the town can levy in a given year. And this is done by taking last year's levy, we have the new growth, and then a 2.5%. Your maximum allowable levity, levity, sorry. Levy levy is you take your levy limit, you put your debt, your debt exclusions and overrides. And then we have an excess levy capacity, which is your levy limit minus your actual levy. Okay, for the fiscal year 2016 levy limit, these are the calculations. Last year, for 2015, the levy limit was $37,777,573. There was no amended growth for 2015, leaving the subtotal at the $37,777,573. For fiscal year 2016, the 2.5 allowable levy increase, which is you take 2.5% of that subtotal, and it gives us $944,439. For fiscal year 2016, our new growth was $864,659. Fiscal year 16, the property 2.5 override, we do not have, it's zero. So at this point, add those together, you get $39,586,671. For fiscal year 2016, the debt exclusion is $2,429,943, giving a maximum allowable levy Okay, the factors that drive our tax rate increases, the debt exclusion, which included our new, the middle school and the Southhold Road purchases, account for about 58% of that tax on the fiscal year 16 rate. We've had demolitions over this past year, properties that have gone off the tax roll due to demolitions from snowstorms. We've had three houses that had fire damage and had to be demolished, and there was other causes for, you know, them to disintegrate and fall down. And then properties becoming exempt is another factor. The town has foreclosed on properties in town for tax titles, purchases by exempted properties, by exempted organizations. We had Fourth Faith Ave. We've also had 400 Packard Job that became an exempt property for the Arch, Arch's community there. Properties purchased by the Town of Auburn, one of them was Southhold Road.
Southhold.
Yeah, yeah. That was the biggie.
First. I want to speak.
Okay, the trends for 2016, our residential growth is up. That is most stable. It's not usually skewed by an individual property making any significant changes. Commercial growth is also up. These numbers can be affected annually by one significant new property or addition. Industrial growth is down somewhat. Numbers can be affected annually by one, one property or addition. This is the second year, though, in a row that it's very low in industrial growth. Personal property growth is up. The personal property is actually quite volatile. This year was up, it was increased because of the public utility growth that this year has been accounted for, for a significant increase. It was, what, $471,000, something like that?
The public utility part of it produced over $12 million in taxable new value for the town, and that was just from Mass. Electric and New England Power.
Okay, you can see on this chart, these are the trends over the past four years of the notable growth we've had. If you notice, in 16, we've had a, on our resident, the personal property was $477,439. Our residential was $259,184. Very low in the industrial, and our commercial was down just a little bit. But that's just showing you the trend over the past four years. The notable growth was actually New England Power, the public utilities, personal property growth, which was a lot of the polls that were, we were able to pick up. Papa Gallo built a new building on Washington Street, which is the ex-Golf Place, and we also have a brand-new Outback Steakhouse. Okay, tax levy increases due to the new growth. So basically, this is dividing down into the categories, your residential, your commercial, your industrial, and your personal property, and the growth we got. The residential change due to the revaluation from fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 16, overall, all the residential properties went up about 1.6%. Equalizing the fiscal year 2016 rate and value changes, this is basically showing an example. Normally, what happens is when your values go up, your tax rate will go down somewhat. But if you notice, if for 2015, a $200,000 property, their tax rate at 1726 was 34252. If you add that 1.61% to the 15, you're coming up with 203,220. You give the same tax bill, resulting in a rate of 1699. The overall residential value for all properties due to the revaluation is the 1.6%. Okay, there are, one of the things we need to vote on is the vote on the residential discount, up to a 20%, 20% discount to owner-occupied resident, residential properties. This shifts the burden from the less expensive homes onto the higher-priced and non-resident home, homes. Normally, this works in communities with large amount of vacation rentals or non-owner-occupied properties to shift the burden onto the rental properties. Next, the final vote for the Board of Selectmen is on our commercial exemptions. No effect on the residential and personal property rates is affected whatsoever when we do a small commercial exemption. Industrial properties do not qualify, but they'll share the shifted burden with the commercial. The exemption goes on, goes to the property owners, not to the business. It relies on a trickle-down effect to hopefully the business owners, the property owners give the discount to the businesses. When we vote on the small commercial exemption, for multipurpose businesses, all of the properties must qualify, all the businesses in that property. The value for the property has to be under $1 million, and has to have less than 10 We, as the assessors, we get a list from the Department of Workforce Development, and we qualify each property by the business located there. Businesses that aren't on the list, they have to be a DBA to be qualified by the assessors. Small and corporation businesses must be on the list. We need to know that there's less than 10 employees in each one of those businesses. Each year, all the properties on the list need to be refiled applications with the assessors. Every year, we send out the applications, and if they qualify, they need to sign and send them back. Vote on the small commercial exemption, the shift, the tax rate up to 10% of the annual vote between the properties occupied by qualifying small businesses onto the commercial and industrial properties. Applications are taken after the classification hearing, and processing can be, can delay settling the tax rate. Any exemption not processed prior to the submission of the recap will impact the overlay Applying the exemptions to the, to Auburn, if we do a shift, 1.10 shift of the commercial-industrial properties, we have a commercial-industrial of $22. Personal property would be $2191, which is a difference of 0.09. If you notice, the difference in the changes, it goes up by like 5%. So if you do 1.15 shift, then it brings the commercial rate up to 23, and the personal property up to 2291. And this, this is giving you an example. Right now, we're presently at 1.22 for our shift, and that gives us a commercial rate of 2440. It's going to give personal property of 2430, and that's a difference of 10 cents. Okay. This right here is a chart showing that our current shift is 1.22, and the current exemption for small commercials is 10%. And if you notice, the values at 250, and it's just giving you an example, what it would be qualified with an exemption, then you have the tax, tax unqualified for the exemption, and taxes with no commercial property exemptions. Okay, historically, the trends for Auburn, we've, back in 2008, we had a shift of 1.58. Presently, in 2015, we're down to 1.22. Trying to get that rate closer. This is giving you an overview of the cost of doing business in the Worcester County area. If you've noticed, this, it's showing your different tax rates for your commercial properties, which include Grafton, Milbury, Oxford, Lester. Annual taxes is based on million-dollar commercial buildings. And it's just, it's giving you an overview of where we stand in the communities. This is the rate chart, basically with the residential, I'm losing it on this one here. This is with assuming the 10% business exemption, and this is assuming that we, it is granted for 2016. If, if we keep the shift at 1.22, then you'll notice the residential factor is 90.8011, bringing our residential tax rate to 1809, commercial will be 2440, and the personal property would be 2430. The makeup of the 83 cents in the residential increase, this is a graph showing that 43% of that increase is going to the middle school debt, another 3% is for the Southhold Road, 43% of that is the increase for the allowance of the Proposition 2.5, which is at actually a 2% rate. And 11% is the demolitions and exemptions that we have to absorb into, into the depreciation. This is showing the tax rate without borrowings. So if we had not done any of the schools or the properties, it would be at 1680. But by adding in the high school at 61 cents, your middle school at 55, your Bay Path is another 10 cents, and Southhold Road is 3 cents, that would bring our current tax rate to 1809. Okay, this is showing your effect of your tax rates on your commercial and industrial assessments. Basically, the higher of, the higher taxes have negative impact on our commercial buildings. By raising the tax, the value base is assessed are actually lower because it goes into their net operating income, adjusting, if you've noticed, you have the building sizes, the values in the bill, for all the different towns, and as the, as the tax rate is going up, the value to those properties, if you notice on Auburn, it's originally at $375,000. By increasing those taxes, it's actually bringing that property value to 287, 325. Okay, the impact on splitting the tax rate on an average property, for, right now, the average residential buildings are, is $232,921. If we keep it at a tax split of 1%, they're looking at 400, 4,640. Right now, if we're at 1.22, which brings, would actually bring their taxes down to So it's just showing the difference between the splits and the tax rates and what's actually being paid on those. And this is a furtherized breakdown. The split of 1.22 is showing that the residential, which is the median house price, the change of the rate at 1% is going to cost the average homeowner $426. Savings and loss with a 1.5% split is $135. Savings and loss of a 120 is 39. And then if it's a 125, it would be, actually go down 59. But if you notice, it's commercial and industrial has, you know, it's just showing the impact that the splits would take for each one of them. I'll let you view this.
Basically, this chart here, it runs you through some various scenarios for what happens to the properties that, where they were valued last year, brings them up to equalize the value with the increase in value for the revaluation this year, and what the change in their taxes is going to be based on the various shifts. If we stayed at the 122, you'll see with that tax rate, the same property that had a bill of $3,915 last year for a single-family house, they are going to see an increase of $261, which adds up to 6.62%. If you look at the average commercial property with the new tax rate, their bill that was $25,690, and I can't read it, $690 last year, their new, new tax bill this year is going to increase by $1,518 to 27, 206?
208.
208. So that bill's going to go up about 5.91%. If you look at this chart, you'll see if we leave it even, everybody's increase is going to be very similar. As you go through the various scenarios, you'll see that it's not going to be even between the various classes. Some will go up more, some will go up less. Okay, this is just showing the, the average here for our state, for our bills, for real estate bills. It's comparing Auburn against the states, and if you notice that Auburn is actually somewhat lower than statewide for, on the average residential billings. The commercial, oh, our commercial industry rate is we, the 72, 72nd highest in the state.
We are down from the 57th highest in the state, which actually puts us in the top quarter of the state for the cost of commercial properties to do business in town. Over the last, what's that, 20 years there? This is just showing the, the value of trends. Right now, it's, they're evening out. We are climbing back up again, so the values are going up for our residentials. The rate of foreclosures is actually, from last year, has gone up just a little bit. It was 16 foreclosures last year. We have 18 foreclosures this year, but it is way down from when it was, you know, back in 2010, 2011, it was up 39. This is just a sample. This is our LA5, which is, is going to be signed by the board once it's, once it's, you've decided on our residential rates. So this is just a sample of what needs to be filed. This is a chart showing our excess levy over a six-year history. Just to let you know, the cost of levying to the max would actually add an additional $1.67 on the residential tax rate, and another $3.38 on our commercial rate if we still use at the classification a 1.22% classification split.
And on the slide, you'll see that for this year, we are levying an additional 2% out of the possible 2.5. So we are leaving that 0.5, you know, as, as excess levy for this year.
So this is just stating if we were to actually, if we levy to the max, residentials, instead of being $18.09, we actually go up to $1976. And overall, the average residential bill would go up 389, and the average commercial bill would go up about 2,386. That's if we levy to the max. Okay, the what-if scenario.
This is basically just a copy of the rate chart for this year, broken down in 1% increments, so that the Board of Selectmen can have an idea as to, you know, what would happen if they decide to change the rate in increments less than what I show in the presentation earlier of five. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Have the board members got any questions? I will ask the CFO for any comments. I will ask the CFO for any comments.
Well, I think Cindy and Mary did a thorough job. I think what I could say is, and I think we presented this at the annual town meeting. We try to hold the line on the operational growth of, of government in general. I think over the past six years, I think we, we displayed a slide that out of a potential 15% growth, at 2.5% each year for a six-year period, we only taxed at a rate of 5.7 odd percent. So we try to hold the line as best we can, recognizing that we do have to meet our fixed costs, that they do increase every year, despite a, a, an economy that has been sluggish. Those expenses still need to be met. So we're trying to hold as best we can the tax rate based on limited growth. And as you can see, that by voter mandate, the tax rate is growing as a result of the debt exclusion projects that were approved by the voters for the Auburn High School, the Auburn Middle School, and Bay Path, even though it wasn't a debt exclusion, it was, it was sent to the voters who approved that project. This slide is very telling, thank you for going back to it. If we subtract that out of the presentation tonight, the tax rate would be more in line with $16.80 if those projects were not approved by the voters. So we knew this was coming, and we're trying to prepare as best we can to, to meet general fund obligations, as well as meet the obligations as approved by the voters of the community.
Any other questions from the board, comments? Well, I'll open it up to those in the audience who'd like to come forward, speak on this tonight, if you would, you'll come to the podium and state your name.
Hi, thank you. My name is Carrie Cross, I am your current president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. Many of you know, my family heritage dates back many, many generations in the Auburn community. I would like to thank the Auburn Board of Selectmen for their passion, continued support of the business community. The efforts of this board continue to make Auburn marketable for businesses looking to relocate here to the town of Auburn. It is our hope that we will continue to support the business community and the Auburn community as a whole by setting a fair tax rate for all taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mattio Gentili, Auburn resident for 29 years. I was a chamber president years ago when I first came up to talk to you guys, now I'm back on the board. So I'd love to see the taxes go down for all of us, that's my mission, that's my goal. I believe that with the current leadership, you guys are doing a great job in running the town and keeping things looking real good financially for all of us. But I think we can do a little bit more. I spoke before this board about six years ago, and I asked for help filling the holes of Auburn. The holes of Auburn were all the empty storefronts up and down Southwood Street and many other streets. I actually took a ton of pictures and passed them out. That was the first year that they started to change the tax rate, so I thank you for that. I suggested that we aim for a single tax rate for residential and business back then. It was agreed that they would work towards that, and that was the first year that we made a change. As you and I drive around town today, a lot of those holes are being filled up by businesses. This is really good for our town, provides job, jobs for, you know, residents, and also added tax revenue for the town. I believe this has happened and continues to happen because we are perceived as a more business-friendly town, because the shift is going in a downward direction, aiming hopefully for a single tax rate. I would love it if we could aim and shoot for a 1.1 differential this year to continue this growth of businesses coming to our town, and hopefully increase the tax revenue to the town, and in time, all of our taxes will go down. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Stuart Lucemore from the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I come up here tonight to kind of expand and continue the, from the prior two speakers. What the past actions of this board has done is provided a sense of stability and planning for businesses as they start to develop multi-year budgets and long-term plans. The past commitments of this board to continue to work towards a fair rate allow businesses to really look at reinvesting. And that's what you've seen in some of this with commercial properties going up and, and personal property going up. Businesses are investing in their own business. With residential properties going up, you have residents investing in their own homes. So it's not just the business community that's, that's gaining out of this. Residents are also reinvesting and putting money into their own homes, and really continuing to make Auburn a vibrant and thriving community. We just ask that you continue with this trend, and thank you for your support of the business community.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Marty Reisner, I'm here on behalf of the Auburn Industrial Development Corporation. I think next to the Auburn Mall, we're one of the largest taxpayers in the town. And I too am here to petition the 1.1 shift, not only on behalf of our company, but on behalf of our, our tenants. We've got some long-term tenants that have been there for a long time. Imperial Distributors, Atlas Distributing, and Mastermans, all businesses of the community that have been good to the town of Auburn. So I'm here to petition on their behalf as well. We do our best to invest in the infrastructure of our company. We've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into asphalt, mechanical, drainage, lighting, roofing, and all in an effort to attract good national tenants. We've been successful. We got PBD Supply this year. We also got a company called S&amp;S Contracting Supplies that used to be located out of Worcester. They moved to Auburn because the tax rate in Worcester was too high. And I just also wanted to say that our company does business within the community. We work with companies like Big Bob's Flooring, we work with KG Sign, and Mastermans, just to name a few. So I'd appreciate it if the board would take in consideration the shift to 1.1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mark Sakishin Jr. I'm speaking here tonight representing Capital Signing Company and the, also the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a residential owner in Auburn. First, I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for all your hard work and effort you put into your job. I know sometimes it's a thankless job, and a lot of people don't understand all the work you guys do. Julie and her staff have also done a great job keeping our town in great shape. We appreciate it. Over the past nine out of 10 years, the Auburn Board of Selectmen have taken steps to reduce the business tax rate from the 2006 differential of 1.62 to the present rate of 1.22. I know this is a very difficult year for the town, and last year, you voted no change. But we can't give up now. There have been over 20 new businesses that came into town last year, and they are employing Auburn people. Because of the changes the board have made in the past, we now have a more positive image, and we cannot let that slip back into the past. Sturbridge voted to go back to a single tax rate last year, and we are fighting to obtain businesses that have gone to our neighboring towns. Our bond rate has dropped again, and that reflects the right mix of businesses and commercial use. This is why we need to continue to work towards a single tax rate in this town. We are the only town in the immediate area besides Worcester that has a split rate. We have made tremendous progress in bringing businesses back to Auburn, but we are still not there yet. We cannot go backwards. This is a win-win decision for the residents and the businesses of our town. So I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to not only keep the small business tax exemption, but to also lower the commercial rate even to just a modest reduction to 1.10, which would have very little impact to the residential rate. I know it's not an easy decision, but it's the right decision. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward? Yes, please.
Good evening, my name is Amar Kapoor. I'm president of Aimtech and ATEC, and Bay State, Bay State Technical Gases. We sold our Technical Gases and its Bay State Thermal Products. All three companies, we have located in Auburn. You know, two of these companies were outside Auburn, we came back. And I keep coming back, last year I said I'll be back. And I keep coming back to you folks, bring us to a single tax rate, like Mark and everybody else have said. And I'm here to give you a little bit of a good news. And the good news is that, you know, our president Obama said that we have to increase employment here by exports. Now, one-third of our business comes from export. But you know, our president did not put incentives for small business to go out and get export business like Germany does, like France does. So, so it was a little bit more costly for us. But we are very enthused by how Auburn has come around and progressively coming to a single tax rate. I'm very confident that you folks will do that. And like I said, thank you very much, but last year, you know, I was a little bit disappointed that you folks did not come down in tax rate. But we are looking to get down to the 1.1 tax rate, like he has said, and eventually to a single tax rate. Because, to be very frank with you, we, you know, in next week, in about 10 days, we have a conference, National Aerospace Association Conference in Las Vegas. And I have about seven economic development folks coming to see us there from different parts of the country, like Georgia, like North Carolina, the South. I intend to be very positive of what you folks are doing, and I hope you will consider that because it's not only to us that they are trying to attract, but to other businesses around here. So when you send a good message, you kind of send a message to the other states that Massachusetts and town of Auburn, Worcester, and all these surrounding towns are really competing for the business. Eventually, you need to increase employment, and we have increased employment, and we are employing local people. And I don't know the exact number, but there are more folks that are residing in Auburn, that work in Auburn in our companies. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come forward, please.
My name is Phil Joinville, 148 Hampton Street. I'd like to thank you for your time this evening. In regards to the lack of residents that have come here tonight, I would like to perhaps speak on their behalf. And it seems that the business owners would like to see an increase or decrease of their, of the tax rate to 1.1. That's an increase of $1.83 per 1,000. That's a big effect on the residents. I've said this in the past, every household in this town is a small business. X amount of dollars come in, X amount of dollars go out. The residential end does not have the opportunity to pass along any increases to their customers. We have to absorb that, and that's a fair amount of money. The tax rate would be going up to $19.50. There are not a lot of towns in the local area that are at that rate. Sturbridge is at $19.24. I'd like to bring attention to Shrewsbury because everybody seems to gravitate to Shrewsbury as, as a point of reference. Their tax rate is $13.20. They also have 36,580 people. The town of Auburn has 16,387 people. There's a fairly big difference there. Our assessed residential value is $1.3 million. Shrewsbury's is $4.3 million. There's a little difference here. I'm sure there are a few real estate people in this room tonight, and you would know that you can't take a two-bedroom ranch and compare it to a four-bedroom colonial. It really doesn't work out. As far as increasing the tax rate or new businesses, somebody just made a statement that we have 22 new businesses coming in town. Is that not supposed to reduce the tax rate? I would expect that that's supposed to do that, but I'm not hearing that, that it's going to one way or the other. And I would like to close with this. If we have to bring the commercial rate down, why can't you bring just the commercial rate down and leave the residential rate alone? Is there a reason why you can't just do that? And I would like an answer for that one. From somebody.
Cindy, would you like to address that, please? Please.
Basically, the levy is decided by what's voted at town meeting. At this point, the only opportunity that we have is to deal with the current rate and the various splits between it. In order to leave the residential rate alone and bring the commercial rate down, there would have to be substantial cuts to the budget to accommodate that.
Okay. One final point, I'll go back to Shrewsbury with 36,580 people. The town of Shrewsbury and the town of Auburn have the same amount of fire and police. And it's just an observation or information that I've read. So if the town needs to find a way to bring things in order, maybe there is alternatives that can be done. And I will, I will close with that, and I would like to thank everybody for their time this evening.
Thank you. Is there any questions, comments from the board? Mr. Simonian.
All right, so this is my sixth tax classification meeting. And just a few observations. Over the years, it seems like this meeting's always been positioned as businesses versus the residents, which really isn't fair. Because the businesses do provide, in addition to the town, they pay taxes just like the residents do. At the same time, another thing that's, I've observed from these meetings is really, it's become a game of political brinksmanship. Typically, during election years, members don't support it, other years they do. And Mr. Joinville, you raised a great point, which is a point that I've raised several times, that we could change the commercial tax rate without affecting the residential tax rate. tax rate. The bottom line is, the town doesn't want to do it. So a couple of things we learned over the last year. I've been told in the past that we can't get a special town meeting on short order. That was disproved twice, both with the South Hold Road last year, and also back in the spring, there was a, an error made to the town warrant, and in a matter of days, a special town meeting was convened in order to take care of that, those items that were left off the original warrant. Became very clear also this year that when there are pet projects to be funded, we can pull a 3/4 million dollar rabbit out of a hat to fund a golf course, but we can't find money to mitigate the taxpayer burden. Change this to a single tax rate at no cost to the residents. It can be done. It's not my job to say how to do it, that's the job of the folks at the other end of the table. But it can be done, Mr. Joinville. So I'm not going to support anything except going to a single tax rate this year. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Carpenter.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's great to see a full crowd. And I do want to share in Mr. Simonian's comments that it isn't business versus residence, and it should never be posed that way. We're all neighbors, we all have made a significant investment in this community, and we should each respect that fact. I find myself, this is my second, and I'm having a very hard time when I look at the history and when I look at the upward spiral of residential taxes, it almost doubled in less than 20 years. I have a hard time saying to the residents of town that we should be moving further and expanding their share of the burden because during the worst economic time that we've experienced probably in our lifetime, we've invested in a new high school, a new middle school, we're currently paying for another school, Bay Path, and we've had to take on a 61A property, all of which are excellent investments and actually pay dividends to the business community because we're training the workforce for the 21st century. So I will be voting to hold tax at 122. Next year, if estimates continue, we're looking at $600,000 hole in the budget. So I can't see adding to the tax burden this year and then going back to the residential taxpayer and saying, by the way, you know, your taxes went up last year, and now they're going to go up this year. And I could never support such a drastic change to a 1.10. That would devastate a residential homeowner's budget, and it's just not good business for the town. So I will be supporting a 122, and those are my reasons. And I hope in the future that I can join and see us progress towards at least a little fairer tax rate for businesses to recognize the fact that you support a lot of our charitable organizations, a lot of our sports teams, and, you know, without your support as well as without your presence in our community, we'd be a lot poorer for it. So I apologize or regret not being able to go along with you tonight, but I hope in the future that we can work together for a fairer tax rate. Thank you.
Mrs. Glidrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just kind of go by my notes I've made here. I'll also thank you all for being here tonight and your comments. We're not going backwards. I believe that we're not going backwards. Even if we hold the rate, we're not going backwards. There's been a lot of pressure on board members to, you know, our taxes are going up too much. The commercial customers can raise their prices and make up the differences, Mr. Joinville said. I'm not going to do that. I don't think we should go backwards. But I also believe we've come a long way in being business-friendly. To me, business-friendly isn't just setting a tax rate annually. We've made investments in the roads, we've made investments in public safety, we've made changes in the permitting process, which streamlines that permitting process. So someone looking to come into Auburn now knows what that process will be and how much time they have to commit to that. The town manager continues to work with the business community, holding business roundtables. We have the Economic Development Committee, and we also have a new comprehensive review and update of the bylaws, which affects everyone, including the business community. So I too will be supporting the 1.22. I don't consider it going backwards. I considering it continuing to move in the right direction with an acknowledgement that we've just had the middle school come online, we had the unexpected 61A property come online, the share, and we are continuing to pay for the high school. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? I'll turn it over to...
So I'm just going to make this last point. I'm not going to argue with anyone. The bottom line is this, and this is not an attack on anyone in any way, shape, or form, but to me, it seems rather hypocritical to have supported every single one of those. You see that tax rate right there? If you, those were overwhelmingly supported by this board, the Finance Committee, the folks in town, and the voters. Town meeting representatives are representative of the voters, and they overwhelmingly supported a 2% budget increase when for years we went 1 in 1/4. If you supported each one of those, and yet you won't support moving on this, that's exactly what I'm talking about, playing a game of political brinksmanship. I'm done.
Mrs. Brotherman.
I too would like to thank everyone also for coming out. These are not easy decisions to be made by any of us. However, with six children, someone paid for my children's school while they were growing up. And actually, somebody took the burden of pain for Mary D. when I was there just a short time ago in the high school. However, the town did take the responsibility for two new schools. And I think it's a really big plus nowadays when you're looking for a home. I would want to know what the school systems were like and how far they've come. And I think that the voters have done a wonderful job with what they voted on. South Hold Road, we could all sit and say, should we, shouldn't we have, whatever. I think in the long run, we were also representing residents that lived in the area. Some were for it, some weren't for it. Weekly, bi-monthly, we come up here and we advocate on behalf of the residents. It's very unfortunate that we cannot... Please, everybody, we can't, but I however will be supporting the 1.22. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brotherman. I'll turn it over to Ms. Jacobson or Mr. Kasnovich, if you have any comments. Nothing at this point? Okay. I would like to, we're in the process of going through this tonight. We have had several letters sent in to us. I just want to acknowledge those, the letters that we did receive, from Worcester Regional Association of Realtors, the Executive Vice President, Colleen Pappas. We got, Aimtech was here. Mr. Kapoor, thank you. And from the Harley-Davidson Motorcycles, from West Auburn, N.F. Sheldon, American Printing, the President, Mr. Penny. From, let's see. Okay, the Counseling Offices of Mariner and Marsha Maria Mariner. We also received one from Mr. Terry Hastings, and also from Mr. Tomasino of 29 Sword Street LLP. So thank you for investing your time and bringing your comments to us. Is there anything else from anybody else tonight? Anybody else from the audience tonight? Mrs. Glidrich.
If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Motion made and seconded, close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. We do have votes to be taken tonight. One, the selection of the residential factor, the open space discount, the residential exception, and the small commercial exemption. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set the residential factor at 122.
Motion's made to, for 122. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Simonian.
Yeah, so just quickly, if you do the math, all those tax increases right there equal about the same amount as going to a single tax rate. It's off by, I don't know, 50 bucks or something per 1,000, but, you know, that's the absurdity of the argument. Done.
Thank you, Mr. Simonian. A motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Under the open space discount, is there a motion?
I have a motion from the... I move that we don't impose the open space discount.
We currently don't have any land classified as open space. So basically, at this point, we would not do that. We would not do an open space exemption.
Second.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Under the residential exemption, that shifts the burden within the residential classes. Is there a motion?
I just ask a question if I could, Mr. Chairman. Do we currently have, I didn't believe we did, any residential exemptions other than for financial reasons? Is that true, or am I mistaken?
No, and we traditionally do not even look at this exemption. It's more geared towards vacation towns where you have a lot of out-of-town residents. Auburn is pretty much owner-occupied, so it would simply create a shift between the various classes of property within the residential, meaning that the people who had larger homes would pay even more. It doesn't really serve much purpose here.
I would make a motion that we do not apply a residential exemption.
Second. A motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And our last one for tonight, the small commercial exemption. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we continue the small commercial exemption at 10%.
Second. A motion made and seconded for the 10% for the small commercial exemption. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. And that's it for the tax classification hearing tonight, unless any else.
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Motion for a five-minute recess?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Call the meeting back to order.
So we have to open the hearing, is this okay?
We have now here a public hearing on a nuisance dog complaint at 20 Chestnut Avenue. We are running a little late, I apologize. Motion's made for open hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have we got the people involved in this complaint with us tonight? I'd ask the police officer and...
Sergeant Scott Mills.
Okay, Sergeant Scott Mills, would you please come forward?
Amy Contois.
And Amy Contois, Animal Control. Okay. Before I have you sit down, I will just raise your right hand, and do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you. Have a seat. Now, I understand this has been ongoing for some time, so I guess we'll turn it over to Sergeant Mills or to Ms. Contois to give us a little background on where we are. The investigating official, so please.
Evening, members of the board. If you would please, the board, my name is Scott Mills, I'm a detective sergeant with the Auburn Police Department. I was asked to present this by the Chief of Police on behalf of the Animal Control Officer and the Department of Inspection Services relative to the nuisance dog complaint for Chestnut Street, Chestnut Ave., rather, with Benjamin Ellis and his wife Carolyn Murray. Excuse me. Beginning on Wednesday, July 26th of 2014, Officer Seeger of our department responded to a dog bite incident where a resident of Wellman Street was walking her dog on Chestnut, I believe, and she was approached by two other dogs, two dogs she described as like husky-type dogs, and one of the dogs bit her dog. She, I guess, recognized the dogs, and she waited for the owner, Benjamin Ellis, Mr. Ellis of 20 Chestnut Ave., to come home. And she, along with Officer Seeger, they confirmed that the dogs were owned by Mr. Ellis, and the dogs named Molly and Malika. And they confirmed, like I said, that the dogs were loose at the time, and the complainant saw them go back to the address on Chestnut. Fast forward then, almost, not quite a year, to April 11th of 2015, a complaint was received by Animal Control of two huskies, or two husky-type dogs that were running loose and entering residence yards in the area of White Terrace, Adella Street, and also Chestnut Ave., so they were just basically running loose. The complaint was investigated by Animal Control. They were not able to locate the dogs at that time. The next day, complaint was received by Animal Control again of the same two dogs running loose on White Terrace, Adella, and Chestnut. A resident was able to actually provide a picture of a husky, or the husky, running down the middle of White Terrace towards Chestnut. Again, the complaint was investigated, the dogs were not located at that time. On April 14th, which is a Tuesday, 2015, the Animal Control Officer issued a verbal warning to Ms. Murray about the dogs. She identified herself as the owner of the two husky dogs, again Molly and Malika. She confirmed that the dogs had gotten loose over the weekend, and she said that they have attempted, made attempts to confine the dogs and keep the dogs contained in their property, but they, you know, they had done some work by constructing a fence and pouring concrete, and the dogs had still, the concrete under the kennel, and the dogs had still gotten out. On May 9th, 2015, Animal Control was once again contacted by a complainant about two huskies that were running loose in the area of Chestnut Ave. The complainant approached, was approached rather, by the two dogs while she was walking her dog, and she became concerned enough that she actually turned around and went back to her home because she was concerned the dogs were going to go after her dog. They were somewhat aggressive, I guess. On May 13th, which was a Wednesday, Officer Vronos of our department responded to a call along with the Animal Control Officer. A dog was found swimming in an above-ground pool, and the woman couldn't get the dog. A resident of 14 Sumner Street had a dog basically stuck in her pool, and the dog was described as an Australian Shepherd husky type. The dog was pulled out of the pool, excuse me, was identified as Molly from Chestnut Ave. And Mr. Ellis took the dog to Hillside Vet, and her body temperature at the time was 92 degrees, which is almost 10 degrees below what was a normal body temperature for a dog, I guess, at the time. They confirmed that the dog was suffering from some hypothermia. She was given some antibiotics and sent home with Mr. Ellis. On the 13th of May, 2015, so that same day, a certified letter was sent out for the two citations for violation of the dog restraint, the town bylaw dog restraint, the dog control, sent to both to Ms. Murray and Mr. Ellis. And it just advised them to be in accordance, you know, to be, in order to be in accordance with the law, they need to provide proof of rabies vaccines for their dogs. And they were given until May 25th. And they were given until May 25th, 2015 to accomplish that and provide proof. On May 29th, 2015, a return receipt for a certified letter was sent and signed, was signed by Ms. Murray and returned to the Department of Inspection Services. On Monday, August 24th, 2015, a resident of Oxford Street North, number 20 Oxford Street North, Mr. Lee, visited the actual Office of Inspection Services to file complaint that two dogs, two husky-type dogs, had been on his property earlier that day and had killed several of his chickens. Mr. Lee provided pictures of the dogs and some of the, the remnants of the chickens to the Inspection Services and, uh, based on past interactions with the dogs and knowledge of the dogs, the Animal Control Officer was able to identify Molly as one of the dogs in the pictures from Chestnut Ave. On the 24th of August, a concerned citizen contacted the Animal Control to report that her daughter, the citizen's daughter, had become concerned because she saw, reported two wolf-like animals wandering through properties on Chestnut and Adella. After some investigation, the Animal Control Officer found two husky-type dogs which she recognized as being from Chestnut Ave., from 20 Chestnut Ave. Mr. Ellis and Ms. Murray were notified and they were issued citations on, on that date. I know from reading some of the material that beginning on August 24th through August 27th, the Animal Control Officer made several attempts, both telephonically and by written, you know, by letters, to work with the owners of the dogs to try and get them to get the rabies shots, you know, to have the dogs be in compliance, including, you know, offering to, to transport the dogs, you know. Not only did the Animal Control Officer research low-cost or lower-cost opportunities for the people because they, they stayed, there was a financial hardship in getting the dogs vaccinated, she offered to transport them, actually, to the vaccination, so, in my opinion, at least after reading what I read, was, made every attempt or every reasonable attempt to assist, you know, the residents with getting the dogs properly vaccinated and bringing them into compliance. I know that, at some point, Mr. Ellis paid the outstanding citations from the previous incidents and did reclaim both of the, both of the dogs and, uh, they were released to his custody. To this date since that time, which would have been in, uh, I believe at the end of August, there haven't, there, to the best of my knowledge, there has been no other, no other incidents since the end of August. But, in essence, that. You have six complaints over the course of over a year, more and more so, thirteen months or thereabouts. And at this point, there's six outstanding citations that have not been paid currently. So that's the status of where, where it's at at this point.
Ms. Contois, have you got anything to add?
I do have, uh, some recommendations that I'd like to
Okay.
offer to the board. Pretty much, we're looking, um, to place for the restraint, restrictions on Molly and Malika because of the extensive history of noncompliance with our current bylaws. So the recommendations that I would like to make, is that the owners would pay the six outstanding citations that were issued on August 24th. So that's for a total of $150. There were three citations issued per dog. The owners were not able to provide proof that the dogs were, in fact, up to date on the rabies vaccinations. So they were issued, um, citations for being unvaccinated at the time. They were not licensed with the town. And our records go back to 2000 and, um, 2011 and they were not licensed from then until now. So they were issued citations for being unlicensed and there were also issued citations for running at large in the neighborhood. So, I'd also like to suggest that the dogs must be confined inside of the home when the owners are not on the property. I would like to recognize that the owners have made attempts to keep the dogs confined. They do have a fence around their property. There is concrete along the bottom of the fence, so the dogs would be unable to dig out from under that section of the fence with the concrete. There is a kennel in the backyard, however, somehow, when the owners aren't home, the dogs are still getting loose. And that would bring me to, uh, the other recommendation that the dogs must be attended to by an owner and restrained when outdoors. So that means, um, you know, putting the dogs in the backyard if no one is with the dogs, that, to this date, has been insufficient to actually be able to keep the dogs on the property. But to recommend that, if the dogs are proven to be in violation of the Town of Auburn Dog Restraint Bylaws within the next two years of the hearing date, so from November 9th, 2015 to November 9th, 2017, that the dog should be removed from the Town of Auburn. And that any failure by the owners to comply with the Town of Auburn bylaws and any orders set forth by the Board of Selectmen may result in fines, further enforcement action, and the, and/or the ordered removal of the dogs from town.
Okay, thank you. I guess just for my own clarification, you have, you've got no record that the dogs have been licensed or vaccinated in the town? Do you know how long the dogs have been in the town?
I do not know how long they've been in the town. I do know that they have owned, uh, or I've been told they have owned Malika for ten years. Um, and they have owned Molly, who is the offspring of Malika for the whole of her life, so five years. I don't know if they have been in Auburn that full amount of time.
Okay. But we're saying here from 2012, 2013, and 14, there's been no record of the dogs residing at 20 Chestnut Avenue, so, my question was, is how long have they actually been here?
So those records are based on when a dog gets vaccinated for rabies at a vet clinic. The vet clinic by law has to forward a copy of that rabies information to the town. So that's how we know what dogs are at what address. And then it would be on the onus of the owner to then come and license their dogs.
And there's been no record, so the dogs have not really been, um, vaccinated since 2012, from what you're saying?
According to our records,
Okay.
you don't have anything to support that.
Okay. Has anybody got anything from the board? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Um, Detective Sergeant, was there any information on whether these dogs have? I know you used the word aggressive in your Saturday, May 9th comment. Have there been other reports of the dogs being aggressive towards, um, people?
We have no other information that they've been aggressive towards people. In the, the first report that I referenced on July 26th, 2014, the dogs did go after another dog and, and actually bit the dog and then, and then most recently with the, where they get into the, the enclosure with the, with the livestock and, and kill chickens. And that's obviously concerning as well with regards to, you know, I guess, terming it aggressive behavior, but no evidence that they've been aggressive towards, towards any humans at this point, no. I mean, they are, like Ms. Contois said, it's a mother and daughter. Uh, it was her only, from what I understand, it was the only dog in the litter. And, uh, I mean, huskies are, all dogs are pack-type animals. I mean, I'm not a dog expert, but it's when they get together and start running around, apparently bad things are happening.
Thank you. Anybody else, anything from the board? Okay, um, I'll ask, is, uh, Mr. Ellis or, uh, Ms. Murray in the audience would like to come forward and, uh, speak to this issue? Okay, before you, before you do, I want to, uh, just sway you in. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? And would you just come over to the podium, please? And just state your name, yes, and state your name for the record, please?
My name is Benjamin Ellis. For the record.
Okay. And you've heard, uh, what, the reports of tonight and, uh, have you got anything to say about, uh, on your behalf?
I agree with everything she says. Everything she wants me to comply with, I'm willing to do. I'd like to state that all those reports are alleged. So the alleged biting of that dog and the alleged killing of those chickens, there's no proof positive that's all true. Those dogs have been born and raised and grew up with my two little kids. Never had an issue with them. My daughter's six, my son's four. They've been around my kids since they were infants. And to touch on the pool incident, now if that was my daughter running after a ball and fell in that pool would be in a whole different meeting. Has that woman had any repercussions for the fact that that pool was left unsafe? Allowing my dog to fall in there? Has that pool since been safed off? No, it hasn't, because I live in the neighborhood. So there's some other issues I think that need to be addressed as well. However, I agree that my dogs are a pain in the ass. Pardon my language. They're a complete nuisance. And everything she said, I agree with a hundred percent.
Okay.
They're out of control and they need to be stopped.
Okay. Now, Ms. Ellis, how long have the dogs been in town?
Those dogs have been in town since they were born, both of them. So ten years.
Well, what I'm hearing are the reports that there's no record of them being, being vaccinated, licensed?
They're currently vaccinated. They've been vaccinated several times. Their vaccinations overlapped. And I wasn't able to get record of the vaccination because of the dates. I couldn't prove that their overlapping vaccination extended the vaccine for the three years, that when you overlap, it does, even though that was the case, so we didn't vaccinate them again because it was overlapping. I just couldn't get record of that. So I went ahead and had her vaccinate the dogs and paid the bill for that and paid the latest citation. The six outstanding citations, I gotta plead ignorance. I don't have the paperwork. If, if there was a bill I owe, check the town, I pay all my bills, I've been living here thirty-two years. All my other bills are paid. Had I known there was six citations on record for me to pay, I'd have just paid them.
You understand, um, the incidents in front of you have been discussed quite a bit by, uh, the Sergeant Detective and Ms. Contois.
Who? I didn't, I, I didn't catch who discussed by who.
The Sergeant Detective here?
Yes.
Yes, and from Ms. Contois, and you understand that there are, uh, sufficient, uh, reason for you to be here tonight to, uh, get this corrected?
Oh, absolutely, that's why I'm here.
What are your plans, uh, down the road to have this, uh, issue corrected?
Well, um, just to touch on some of the things I've done, like she said, the completely fenced-in-the-yard cement, electric fence, dog kennel with cement. I've done all those things. Clearly didn't work. The dogs have since been locked up in the house constantly unless I'm there to supervise them outside of the house. There's been no record of them out. The other thing I'd like to touch on is the fact that there is in fact a look-alike couple of huskies running amok. So I feel like my dogs are getting the brunt of all this and half the time, it's not even them. So, and I've actually made a call to the town, one instance in particular, when they were accused of being out and about when they weren't. They were right in front of me and I'm getting calls saying they're out running around. I'm looking at them. I'm not saying it's not them, most of the time. I'm saying that some of those times, I believe it wasn't them. That's my, that's what I believe. As far as corrective action, I mean, I pay the citations, give me a zero-tolerance situation where if it happens again, you can take the dogs. I don't, to be honest with you, I've been back and forth if I even want the dogs. What's keeping me with the dogs is I'm loyal to the animals. My kids have known those dogs since they were little. For them to, you know, where are the dogs, it, it breaks my heart. So, they're a pain. My house is destroyed inside and out. The oldest one went through a fire, she's got a lot of anxiety. That's what stemmed letting them stay outside and then just mayhem ensued. And here we are doing this, so...
Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you first spoke, you, um, you made the statement, "They're out of control and they need to be stopped." I just want, for the record, to clarify that statement.
Well, the fact that they've been out and about and breaking out of the yard constantly, digging around even the trenches cement that I put in, I mean, what can I say? They, they break out of the yard and they apparently run, you know, havoc, reap havoc in my neighborhood. I mean, yeah, it's, it's an issue. If it wasn't, if I, if it wasn't an issue, I wouldn't be here complying with everything you're telling me. They're a pain, so...
And it's, and is it, is it your intention? You just said, you know, because of family situation or whatever. It's your intention to try to keep the dogs?
I mean, I'm up in, I'm up in the air. I mean, yesterday, I was ready to just say, hey, let's, let's work with the town, find a, uh, some way to place them. Then today, I'm like, you know, it, it breaks my heart to think of it. I've had Malika since she was a puppy. She's been through a lot with me. She's always been a good loyal dog, great with my kids. I don't see what other people see. You know what? You put your dogs around some, some chickens, what are they gonna do? I mean, make friends with the chickens? Your dog's gonna kill the chickens too. That's what dogs do. It's, it's a barnyard animal running around, it's a dog, that's what they do. I don't know what to tell you. I don't, I'm, I feel bad for the chickens. I think it sucks that they killed the chickens, but that's what, it's not like they're off killing people. They're not biting kids. You know, I got, one time I got a report because they killed a rabbit. I mean, I got people's, people's cats in the neighborhood killing birds, squirrels, and, and mice all day long. My, my dog allegedly kills a, a wild rabbit and it's, it makes front-page news. I mean, come on.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Simonian?
I, I don't, I don't wanna, uh, I don't want this to come across like a lecture, but it's really difficult. I've had dogs my whole life and I, I gotta be honest with you. It kinda seems like you have a cavalier attitude towards taking care of these dogs. You say, "They're gonna kill chickens." Well, if they weren't in this situation, if they weren't allowed to get near them, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have killed them. That's your responsibility.
I agree.
A dog is this pretty smart animal, but it's not smart enough to walk itself up to the town hall and get a license, or to know that it needs one. And I don't say that facetiously. I'm just, to me, it's absurd that as someone who's owned a dog pretty much my entire life, and I know dogs can be a pain. I've had dogs chew expensive things. My current dog, boy, he's on my last nerve some days. But it's still my responsibility to keep him under control. And it's not fair to the animal for me to go, "Hey, I'm gonna get a dog, maybe I'll take care of him today, maybe I won't." On the one hand, I understand you've taken great lengths to keep him in the yard, but seems like all of the money that you've spent, all the time that you've invested, I don't know, did you ever give a thought to maybe spending that money and time with a trainer? Or trying to figure out why, you know, trying to do something to mitigate them constantly running away, constantly trying to get out? I don't know. But I just, I'm, I'm bothered as a dog owner by the attitude of, "Yeah, they're gonna do this, they're gonna do that." It's the owner's responsibility to make sure that they don't attack other animals, that they don't go after kids, that they don't just run. I mean, we have, I mean, we have, we have laws about dogs being on leashes for a reason, to try to prevent those things. And I know people who it's happened to. And has my dog gotten loose? Sure, it happens. Everyone who's had a dog, I tell you right now, they're lying if they say my dog never got loose. But if it's once or twice, here or there, it happens. But when it's constantly, which you admitted to, several of these, it just bothers me that you kind of, it seems like you kind of put more of the responsibility on the dogs than you are on yourself. Done.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Well, can I, is there any way I could speak in response to that?
Please.
Well, let's just touch on, they never went after kids and I never condone the fact that they went after kids. You brought that up. It was one isolated incident with some chickens. I agree with you 100%. It's my responsibility to keep those dogs contained. Completely agree with you. I said that from the beginning. I'm not putting the responsibility on the dogs. They get out, they're huskies. You don't, I mean, I don't know if you've ever dealt with the breed. Look into it. It's what they do. They're no longer out in the yard, so they can't get out now. They, I just told Officer Mills that I wouldn't be surprised if the next step was them breaking through an exterior door to get out. If you would come to my house and do a tour of the things that they're managed to get through, it'd probably blow your mind, to be honest with you. And I don't know if it stems from the anxiety for my, the older dog. She was in a house fire. Ever since then, she's been, it's been tough to keep her inside. So, okay, I'm gonna take some steps to allow her to be outside where she's more comfortable. I did the fence, I did the kennel, and we're talking a 10 by 20 kennel with a top on it, cemented in, poured the cement myself, dug the trench. I mean, I'm not just fooling around and saying, "I'll let them out the front door and make sure they don't kill chickens." I took a lot of time and effort into keep them in the yard, try to keep those dogs happy because of the anxiety that was originally causing them to not want to be inside or whatever the reason is. And it's just, it spiraled out of control. I agree, it's all my fault. It's my responsibility. I wish I had nipped it in the bud sooner. I wish I placed them somewhere sooner. But now, you know what? I've had Malika since she was 11 years old. I mean, excuse me, since she was a newborn, she's 11 years old. It's her puppy of a single litter and I've tried to place them. I can't find anyone to take them together. I'm afraid if they go separately, the older dog's not gonna do well with it. So, I mean, what do I do? What would you do? I'm not in a good position. You think I'm in a good position here? I take full responsibility for these dogs' interactions.
It's not my responsibility.
Okay, well, I don't want you to think I'm cavalier about it because it weighs on my conscience quite a bit.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we're fortunate that we're here just tonight.
Sure.
For a nuisance complaint. My concern is that, you know, the way it's progressing, I don't want you to be here before us in a future date because the dogs have gone after a person and now we're looking at euthanizing these dogs. We don't want to get to that point. And from what you just said when you just spoke to Mr. Simonean, this might not be the right setup for these dogs. It doesn't sound like it's fair to these dogs. They need to be able to get out and run. And it certainly sounds from the, you know, the recommendations that the Animal Control Officer has made that, at this point, if you're not home to care for these dogs, if we vote the recommendations of the Animal Control Officer, they're going to be cooped up in that house and more frustrated, more anxious to get out. And when they do, they're gonna take off. And then the neighborhood is put, you know, put in fear. I can't tell you what to do with your dogs. I'm going to support the conditions that the Animal Control Officer has made, but I just want you to think about the dogs and the fairness to the dogs. And we have an excellent Animal Control Officer here. We have people in town who care about animals deeply and just, again, I can't tell you what to do with your dogs, but just, it sounds like they need a different kind of home on a farm where they can run or in a more rural area before, like I said, we're back here at a dog hearing that, you know, a child has been bitten or something and we're looking at euthanizing the dogs because then everyone loses. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does anybody got anything else? Anything from Detective Mills? Ms. Contois? Mr. Ellis, have you got anything else?
I appreciate your concern and I just touch back on the, I mean, they've been, my children have been raised around these dogs. They, it's just like any, any family pet. They, you know, they pull on their ears, they grab their tail. These dogs aren't gonna harm a little kid or a person. I understand where you're coming from, but it just hurts my feelings to think that of my dogs. However, I do agree with you. I agree that another option might be better suited for them. I've made attempts to place them together in another situation. It breaks my heart with no luck. Probably is the best direction to travel for them. I have a feeling it's gonna be difficult to do when keeping them together, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, are there any neighbors here? Okay. Well, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You have recommendations in front of you by the Animal Control Officer. And what is the pleasure?
Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt the recommendations of the Animal Control Officer. One being that the owner must pay the six outstanding citations, which were issued on August the 24th, 2015, for a total of $150. Item two, the dog must be confined inside of the home when an owner is not on the property. Item three, the dog must be attended to by an owner and restrained when outdoors. Item four, if the dogs are proven to be in violation of the Town of Auburn Dog Restraint Bylaws within two years of the hearing date, November 9th, 2015 through November 9th, 2017, the dogs must be removed from the Town of Auburn. And lastly, item five, which is failure by the owners to comply with the Town of Auburn Dog Bylaws and any order set forth by the Board of Selectmen may result in fines, further enforcement action, and/or the ordered removal of the dogs from the Town of Auburn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Sharon, have you got that? Okay. Mrs. Goodrich.
I just have a question on the motion. On number four, if the dogs are proven to be in violation of the Town of Auburn Dog Restraint Bylaws within two years of the hearing date, the dogs must be removed from the Town of Auburn is, so that is, any violation if they have a fine if they get out of the property?
So for that one, it would be a violation of the dog restraint, so if they were found to be off property, whether that's in the middle of the road, down the street, I would enforce that the same way I enforce all dog restraint complaints. There would need to be proof further than just a neighbor calling and saying that they're complaining because the dog was loose. I would need to either have photographic evidence that the dogs were loose or find them myself.
Not just the report.
Mr. Simonean.
I have a question. Are there, do you know of groups or is it possible to help Mr. Ellis try to relocate? I mean, I, I do feel for, he says he has two small kids, life gets crazy. They're family dogs. Obviously, there is, you know, some love for the dogs. Dogs become part of the family, you know, pets do. So I would, if, if he really wants to try to find a place where he can relocate both of these dogs, I don't know if we can help him. I understand his concern about wanting to keep the dogs together. It makes, it makes sense. And I know that if it gets to a point where the dogs have to be removed from the town, that whole thing, it probably ain't lost in the shuffle and they probably have a better than 50% chance that they would be euthanized at some point. So, if we can prevent that, if there's a way to work with them, if, even if it's some recommendations or a sheet of paper with organizations he called, I don't know what it is. You're more of an expert on this than I am. I'm just asking, as someone who's had a dog my whole life, who understands, you know, how they become part of the family, I'd rather try to, you know, put these dogs in a safe environment if that's his wish, rather than see the alternative. I think that would probably be pretty heartbreaking to most people, including the owner, his family, his children. So, if we can do that, it would be great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Thank you. So that you follow along with this and this should take care of any of the future complaints or whatnot with recommendations. Thank you very much. Thank you, Detective, and thank you, Mr. Ellis, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, there's no communication, so we'll go to Charter Communications.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Chair. Dallin, I believe the gentleman left his coat. Mr. Ellis could have left this. I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have no communication, so we'll go to Charter Communications and it's considered request from the Charter to provide letter of support for the merger with Time Warner Cable and Bright House Networks.
Through the Chair, the Board held a meeting on this at its last meeting and the Board voted to have Charter come back at this meeting with a draft letter for your consideration, which we have in our papers, as well as an update on some of the issues that were raised on Mr. Y. Justice that evening, who attended. And as far as, not just on Mr. Y. Justice's street, but I believe he had indicated another street. So Heidi Van Der Bruck is here from Charter and I can have her introduce her technical.
Good evening. Again, my name is Heidi Van Der Bruck. I'm the Senior Communications Manager for Charter. I want to thank Town Manager Jacobson and the Select Board for the opportunity to be here this evening to let everyone know what we've done to correct and justify some of the issues and concerns that were brought up on the October 26 hearing. I'm here with my colleague, Mike Bonadieas. He's the Technical Operations Manager for Central Massachusetts, handling the Worcester area. So since that meeting, I also just wanted to mention that we did reach out on a one-by-one basis to those constituents that had issues. All those current issues that were brought up with those constituents on a one-on-one basis were rectified. And as of today, as of right now, they are happy with the adjustments and improvements that we made to their concerns. I know Mr. Simonean was one of the constituents that Mr. Bonadieas had spoken to and Mr. Bonadieas can speak to those issues there. But again, I want to let Mr. Bonadieas speak to the Board and let him know what we've done to rectify some of the situations.
Okay. Good evening. Just want to let you know that a lot of the issues that were brought up, we dealt with those customers one-on-one. What we did first was we optimized our HFC plant just to make sure that everything was the way it should be before we entered their homes. And on some of those cases, after we've gone through it, we finally threw things off. Nothing to the effect that should be causing constant, I guess, tiling, freezing, internet issues. So once we did that, we got into the homes and reconfigured some things in the home because I know as of late last year, we went all digital, of course. So that by default affects your TVs a lot more than in the past. In the past, if you had a bad connection or poor signal, you'd have some kind of a picture. You'd have, whether it be snowy, rainy, or whatnot. Now with digital, it either works or it doesn't, or it tiles and freezes or goes to gray screen, of course. So I know with a lot of the issues that were brought up, we've dealt with those. Mr. Simonean, I know we want to follow up with you as well and just start from scratch, from square one. Start from the home, make sure everything's what we call certified and we'll work through that. Because that's what we found in a lot of cases now. We've gone through your whole area because I know you spoke about a lot of the constituents as well, saying they're having issues in that area. But we would ask that anyone else that has any issues, please, if you want to get the information to Heidi, then to me, we'll gladly deal one-on-one with them as well and work till complete satisfaction with them.
Well, I just had an issue myself at home and 2:30 in the afternoon, we discussed it with them and at 8 o'clock at night, they were there and knocking on my door and my situation was corrected. So the service is unsurpassed. We've, I've had good luck with them in the past and just recently this past week. So it's, the service has been, you know, very, very good. And to those places that there's a problem, then that's right. They should contact you and be sure that that's corrected because you're right on the money with correcting that and we appreciate that. But it's gotta be reported.
Thank you.
Anybody got anything else? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. As you know, I was one of the ones that had some concerns, heard from a lot of residents. But, you know, I do appreciate the fact that, number one, Charter has been very responsive to, in regards to the service calls. Having a direct contact now, residents feel that they are not, you know, going through all of the red tape. They kind of, they kind of have an inward charter, so feel better about that. And then in regards to the merger, you know, I think, you know, when you have a merger and you're trying to showcase yourself, you have a tendency to maybe put a few extra dollars in, upgrade equipment and stuff. So I feel a little more confident tonight and I thank you for following up and being patient and coming back tonight. But I feel a little more confident tonight in supporting this.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Simonean.
So I'm, I'm just gonna comment quickly as to why I'm not gonna support this tonight, which doesn't mean I won't forever, but, you know, down the road. I appreciate the reach, reaching out, but one of the things, heard people say over and over, I have a problem, someone comes out and then it's not there. Over the last week and a half, I've kind of been in the opposite situation. It's actually gotten worse and I know we talked about it. At the same time, as, as I said, several other people have also mentioned that, we've received some emails about some ongoing issues that need to be corrected. I understand you making an effort. I applaud you for that. I think it's great. I just don't think it's quite there enough for my satisfaction and the people who've contacted me. And it's not just about me. Those are the people I represent and the overwhelming majority of them have asked me not to support it. I owe that to them as their representative to do their business. So I'm not supporting it tonight. But I do appreciate the effort. Thank you for coming back. Thank you for continuing to make strides. I hope that we will get to that point where I'll be happy to wholeheartedly support it.
Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, let's pleasure the Board on the left. You have the letter in front of you.
Make a motion that we authorize the Town Manager to execute the letter and send it.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Carpenter.
I would just ask that the Chairman of the Board co-sign the letter as it's on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. It would be nice to have the Chairman sign the letter in addition to the Town Manager.
No problem with that. Is there anything else? Being nothing, Mrs. Goodrich.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the, I don't have a problem with the Chairman co-signing the letter. I just think the letter's gonna have to be redrafted to include as Town Manager for the Town of Auburn and Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, just so it's a, I mean, would that be common practice? Just have the Chairman sign the letter with the, the letter written in the first person?
We can make adjustments to it.
Great, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. And we thank you both very much for being here tonight.
Thank you for supporting the letter and supporting Charter Communications. Again, if there's any constituent questions or concerns, you know, please funnel their names and addresses to me and I'll be happy to look into it and take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Under General Items B, we have Consider Request for Redemption of Property at Number 12 Williams Street. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could offer an explanation of this item? On or about February 13, the town, through taxful closure, took the property for unpaid taxes, penalties, interest. It has remained in foreclosure. We were considering auctioning off the property recently at a meeting we had with the finance team. Consequently, a letter has come in from the previous owner, the beneficiary of the previous owner, asking if there was any interest on behalf of the town redeeming the property back to the owner. We cannot do that unless a petition comes before the Board. We checked with our foreclosure attorney, Coppola, who indicated that it would have to come before this Board and voted to redeem the property for us to give it back to the beneficiary as a result of this letter that's before you tonight. I can tell you there was, at least in my history here, there was one other occasion where a matter such as this went before the Board regarding a property on Southbridge Street. At the 11th hour, the petitioner decided to pull the plug on that request. So this is a proper procedure. It does require a vote of the Board. Given that, I will turn it over to the beneficiary who is making this request before you tonight.
Chairman, before we do that.
A big pardon?
Before we do that, can we ask the Treasurer to join us at the table? I assume she's here for this, this item.
I would, I'll ask for that if you would in the future, please. Thank you. Would you please come forward?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, these matters statutorily are under the Town Treasurer, so it would have to be funneled through the office, her office.
Okay. Thank you. I guess I'll turn it over to you, Mary Ann. Is there anything that you want to say, you know, regarding this process?
I do have information on it. I have the redemption amount on it. That would be $40,000, $40,000, 485, 94. We've been talking back and forth for a while on this process, and we did, I did talk to Coppola, our attorney, and they advised me of the process and what we had to go, what we had to do in order to redeem a property.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Simonian.
So, at this point, I'm not sure. Has the petition been submitted?
It's the letter before you tonight.
Oh, I thought it was some sort of official document. So, this letter serves as the.
Yes.
Okay. I thought we had some kind of state form. I'm amazed, because I've never seen anything done without a ridiculous amount of forms.
Okay. All right. Now, I'll turn it over to you, and would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yeah. My name is Chris Murray. I'm actually here with my client, Ernest Bostwick, who is the beneficiary of the property under a will from his mother, Pauline Bostwick. Hi.
Yes, my name is Ernest Bostwick. I'm the executor of the estate for my mother.
If I may, Mr. Bostwick, what are your plans for the property?
To redeem the property and to sell the property.
So, you wish to, you're going to renovate, do, any work has to be done to it to turn it around to, to sell it? So, it's not going to be maintained in the family for, you are just going to turn it around and sell it?
Correct.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Has the town incurred any costs since it's taken possession of this land to secure it or, you know, better it, you know, the physical appearance?
No, we just had legal expenses, and that isn't included in that $40,000 number.
So, are any costs that the, you know, to the town, any and all costs are included in the $40,000, 485, 94?
Exactly.
And there's no other anticipated costs going forward? I mean, if there were, if there were legal expenses, would we, to, I guess, complete this process, would those be included?
We confirmed all the legal fees that we had incurred so far, and as far as I know, we would not have to contact him again on this. And he did give us the bottom line, what it would be.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Mr. Simonian.
I'm just wondering, I know we have the letter in front of us, but is it possible to expound on what caused all of this?
Well, upon Ernest's mother's death, he found out there was a $450,000 Mass Health lien, and he wasn't aware of.
Excuse me, a $450,000 what?
Massachusetts Estate Health lien.
Okay.
For the, I guess it was for the nursing home assistance for Pauline Bostwick, Bostwick. And basically, he wasn't aware that, he thought he would owe that money, so he stopped paying the taxes and let it go to foreclosure. And then, I guess, he was able to work out a deal with Mass Health where he wouldn't owe the full $450,000. So, he'd like to redeem the house and, I guess, sell it for fair market value.
And that would pay the expenses on the balance to the state, correct?
Yeah. They'd get the balance, and then he'd be, he'd get paid back for the funeral expenses of his mother, but the remainder of the balance would go to Mass Health.
Any other questions? Is Mr. Kasnovich, Ms. Jacobson, have any comments?
I didn't know this information at the time we put the agenda on, so this is all new to us.
Right.
I was hoping to hear that the gentleman would resign the home, being that it was a family home. I understand the complexities of Mass Health and your mom being put in some type of care facility where she would have to pay back the commonwealth. But it's equity that the town could receive as well if we sold the property at fair market value, and we absorb that $40,000 of cost as well. So, it's, it's news to me. I didn't realize this coming in to tonight's meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. So, if there was a lien on the property from Mass Health, and this was her asset, and the town took by tax title, her asset, and the property is valued more than what the town's owed, could Mass Health come after the town? It was her, it was her asset. Is there a lien still on the property from Mass Health?
I'm sure there's a recorded lien on the house. And if the property were owned, and I'd have to check this out legally, but because the town took it through foreclosure, we are now the assessed owner. Therefore, I don't believe the town would have any tax liability towards the unpaid lien that's recorded on the property. That's something we would have to check with legal counsel before I can suggest, you know, suggest conveying the property back to.
Okay. Mr. Simonian.
I don't know if this is something you can answer. So, if, if you can't, if you can't get the property redeemed and sell it, are you still on the hook for the lien?
No, he's not. No.
Okay. So, there's, that's over and done with, basically, as far as any responsibility for?
Yes, yes.
All right. Thanks.
Mrs. Goodrich.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but it's my understanding that if there's a, and that's why I want you to look into this, if there's a lien on the property from Mass Health, I mean, if there's a transfer of property, it could be, it could be 10 or 15 years later. If there's, if there's an existing lien that triggers the state coming after that money, I just, I just want to make sure it's not us. So, I want to, I would prefer to have a very clear answer on the status of this Mass Health lien for $450,000.
Mr. Carpenter.
Chairman, I would make a motion that we table this to our next meeting to give staff time to research the issues that have been brought up.
Okay. Motion been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. There's a motion made and seconded to table this until our November 23 meeting. Mrs. Goodrich.
Just under discussion while the attorney's here, I'd ask that the attorney be willing to communicate with the CFO, because there, sometimes when you're dealing with Mass Health, some privacy issues that the town may not have access to, and we want to be sure that we have clear access to this information to make a informed decision.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming. And so, the motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for coming, and we'll see you on the 23rd of November. Next, we have on the agenda, a discussion on potential vote on the remote participation. I know this has been ongoing for some time. We did have a vote at a town meeting so that we could have a additional person as a, I'm looking for the word, just an extra for the planning board. Thank you. An alternate for the planning board. And Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I apologize, but with the board's consideration, I'd ask that we hold this until the next meeting, because I did not bring my paperwork with the proposed conditions. I apologize. And it's not in our package tonight.
Okay. So, make that in the form of the motion?
Please.
Okay. So, the motion been made and seconded to hold this until our meeting on November 23. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Gift acceptances. We have a couple here. First, we have, let's see, the pet store, a Tannik Pet of Worcester, for cat and dog food and the approximate value of $100 and its food for animals housed at the animal control shelter.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. The second one we have here in front of us tonight is various pet stores and pet food and supplies for use at the animal control shelter. And before I ask for a motion, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jacobson to explain a little bit about this one.
Thank you. Oftentimes, we get contacted by a pet store that they have food that either the bag has broken and they can't sell it, but they want to donate it to us. And oftentimes, they want us to pick it up that day because they have to get it out of their room. So, we were looking for just a blanket approval of accepting donations like that from pet stores. The value is very, it's a modest value, but a lot of times it is time-sensitive. Or they'll call and they'll have a product that we can use that may not last for another two or three weeks before we come in and ask the board for a vote to accept the pet food. So, we thought we could get a vote that would allow us to accept pet food as it becomes available to us. Maybe, you know, sometimes we get a call, they have leashes, you know, somebody left a leash, they have a leash, they have a blanket. There are a lot of supplies that technically we should be coming for everything that gets donated, but we thought this may help move the process along so we can go and pick it up as soon as we get the call.
Okay. Mr. Simonian.
Yeah, I have no problem supporting that. I'm just, so I would just assume that the cost of everything under those circumstances will be, those gifts would be, the cost would be logged with the value of those, we, somewhere, because under law, we have to comply with that, right? To the value of whatever we accept. I don't.
No, we would keep a log on that. The value's really de minimis, but a broken bag of dog food, you know, we can put a value on it.
No, the government is.
Okay. All right. So, the, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this gift with gratitude. I'll make a separate motion for the other, if that.
Aye. Yeah. Okay. Motion's been made for the various pet stores' pet food and supplies.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And I think with this here, for use at animal control shelter, various pet stores, it's open-ended. I don't think we need a second.
Well, that's, that gift is given by various pet stores, right? So, I'd just make a second motion to cover.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
That the board authorize town manager?
To accept.
To accept gifts of this nature as they become available.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Sharon, have you got that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Is any discussion? All of the favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Proclamations. We have one, the ribbon cutting for the Holiday Inn Express and Suites. They've done a complete renew to their building, and the Chamber of Commerce has asked us to vote a proclamation for their ribbon cutting ceremony at the Holiday Inn Express and Suites at Thursday, November 12. That's Thursday this week, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we not issue a proclamation. Instead, draft a letter signed by the chair, expressing our appreciation for the investment that Holiday Inn Express and Suites has made. I don't feel that this rises to the level of a proclamation. I know there's an item later on, we'll probably talk about it more full-throated, but to me, I think a letter signed by the chair would be sufficient.
Okay. The motion been made for a letter from the chairman to the Holiday Inn Express for their open house ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday, November 12. Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay. Second for discussion. Mr. Simonian.
So, I don't disagree, but this, this brings up something that we've touched on in the There probably are different levels of these types of investments and things that folks in the business community do. Heretofore, pretty much all we've had available to us is either a proclamation or not a proclamation. A letter from the board or the chair is certainly something we could consider. But with that, we don't really have, we haven't established, like, a category or a level of this warrants a proclamation, this warrants a letter, this warrants something else. So, while I agree in principle with what Mr. Carpenter's saying, to me, the fact that we haven't established tiers of, you know, whatever you want to call it, investments to the town or things of this nature, I think we've kind of put ourselves in a position where we probably have to go with the proclamation. That's just my thought on it.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter.
To that, to that end, no, we do not have a policy. I do know that the subcommittee has worked for a while on a policy, and I know the chair has asked us to revisit it. Traditions start and end at different times. This is no different than a tradition that we started four years ago with the tree lighting. There was no policy, there was, we never did it, but we do it now. To me, to continue a process diminishes those individuals who receive proclamations for individual achievement. This, to me, just does not rise to a level of giving a proclamation. So, if it's between issuing a letter, expressing our gratitude as a board, I would rather do that. But if it's to issue a proclamation, I will not support issuing a proclamation. And going forward, I will not, I will not support issuing a proclamation on instances that I don't feel rise to the level of individual achievement that this board should be interested in addressing as a town.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Simonian.
So, I'll just leave this out there. I don't disagree. And I raised this point a couple of years ago, and we just kept issuing proclamations. That said, I'll go back to same thing I've said about this and other things. We set a precedent, and we didn't, we really didn't leave ourselves an out of, we're going to establish levels of what's, you know, considered worthy of a proclamation and what's not. So, I look at it as, the last thing I want to do is offend Holiday Inn Express or anyone else who is having, doing something of this nature and showing a reinvestment into. So, until we have that clearly established, while I, like I said, I agree with you in principle, wholeheartedly, I can't support not giving a proclamation at this point for that reason.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sharon, is a proclamation prepared and with us tonight?
Is it prepared?
Yeah.
Yes. Just in case, because it's Thursday, but.
Right, right.
You can do a letter if that's what you vote.
Mr. Carpenter's made some valid points, and Mr. Simonian's made some valid points. I, for one, have expressed that a fact that the proclamations, I think, have gone a little bit too far, and you're right, there are some traditions that begin and end. And I think this, unfortunately, may be one for me that we're going to say that, we may end this just to get the ball rolling and say that the proclamations have been overextended, I think. People that have had individual successes and experiences, and they are worthy of a proclamation, yes. But as far as, this is a ongoing business. It has done a renovation. There's been some, probably some new management there. It's definitely a business that's supported the town, and it's been a great business, but however, I don't feel warrants the proclamation, so I will support the letter instead of the proclamation. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I will support the proclamation. When we first got the request, I felt like, I absolutely felt this wasn't proclamation-worthy. I think it is getting carried away, but the Chamber of Commerce has already advertised this event. It is a ribbon cutting ceremony event. They have a format that they follow. The Holiday Inn Express and Suites are part of the chamber. They are. event has already been advertised, promoted, and I think there's a certain expectation. And if the Board doesn't come with a proclamation, I feel that it will look unprofessional.
Mr. Simonian?
So, just the recommendation, or actually, I'll throw this out there as food for thought. This obviously exposes a lapse in our ability to create something. So, it seems like maybe we need a business award side and an individual contribution award side. Maybe a proclamation, a citation, and a letter might be the three levels that would satisfy the worthiness of whatever with a brief description of what each accomplishment demonstrates. So, I don't know, just, again, just for thought. I don't disagree with anything that was said here. I just think we've put ourselves in this position. Shame on us.
Okay. Well, I think in response to that, that we've had sports teams here that have not made it to the state finals. They have approached it, and they have done very, very well. However, that's, the proclamation that was made there was, you did a great job, but you didn't make it all the way to the top, so what's the proclamation? New businesses, that's one thing. We've had businesses that have been, well, they've been in business for a long time. They've changed their name and they've changed the management. So, there's many ongoing things that we have to look at. And I think, you're right. I think that, I would disagree with Mr. Goodrich, and I think that may be a good point to start someplace and maybe draft a letter and say, yes, yes, it has been proposed as a ribbon cutting ceremony, and yes, the town supports them 100%, but I think the letter would be of support as much as a proclamation, because the proclamation is, I would be, I don't know how they would discuss a proclamation for, you know, a ribbon cutting for new paint and carpeting and what have you. So, I would support the letter. Mr. Carpenter.
And I just want to make one final point. The Congressman, I have not been to a lot of these because my business takes me out of town, but Congressman McGovern provides a letter when a business opens. So, I don't agree that it's unprofessional. If our representative in Congress can send a letter, then we humble Boards of Selectmen should be able to do the same and not be, I don't think that there should be expectations on part of anybody, because I don't think that's fair to the Board. This has to come before the Board. There should not be any expectation that past practice, as Boards change, that we should be held hostage to prior Boards' decisions and that we may or may not agree with. I respect Mrs. Goodrich's points greatly and Mr. Simonian's, but as I said, I don't feel that this, this is no reflection on the business. I just feel that we need to start a new tradition, and we need to start expressing as a Board what we feel we want to engender as a community and recognize as a community in how we do so.
Thank you. Okay. The motion been made and seconded for sending a letter from the Chairman to, for the ribbon cutting at the Holiday Inn Express. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, three to two. Thank you. Okay. Now, we have, we're going to read an Eagle Scout proclamation authorized on October 26th by this Board for James Sinclair, Boy Scout Troop 53. Mr. Goodrich, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I have to read this tonight, because this, as we've seen in many letters, Boy Scouts, I believe it's only about 3% of Boy Scouts who make it to the Eagle Scout level. And not only has this Eagle Scout, this Boy Scout made it to the Eagle Scout level, but he's already left to serve in the United States Navy, and there is no formal or public ceremony for him to be recognized at. So, I think it's important that we recognize him. So, the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen proclamation Eagle Scout Award, whereas the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Auburn wishes to recognize the outstanding achievement of Auburn's youth as an illustration of the bright future these leaders of tomorrow will provide our great country, and whereas the Eagle Scout Award is the highest honor a Scout may achieve, demonstrating his dedication to the organization while serving his community, and whereas Mr. James Sinclair has faced the challenges and met them while demonstrating the positive qualities of our youth, and whereas Mr. James Sinclair's achievements and dedications, including his commitment to serve his country and the United States Navy, should be held aloft for his peers to acknowledge and emulate. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Auburn Board of Selectmen hereby acknowledges and recognizes James Sinclair for achieving the Eagle Scout Honor. It's signed by all the Board members, and I'm sure his parents will be happy to accept this on his behalf till he returns.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you please be sure that that gets forwarded? Thank you. Okay. Under Town Manager items, the announcement of free pet veterinary exams at the Senior Center for Pets of Seniors Age 60 and Over Only.
Through the Chair, we just want to let everyone know that this wonderful shelter, the Second Chance Animal Shelter, has offered through a grant that they received to come in, and it is specifically to help seniors 60 and over. So, while we would love the opportunity for this to be available for everybody, the parameters of the grant require that it be for 60 and over. So, just as a reminder, there is a flyer in your packet. We had this program, I believe, a year ago. It might have been two years ago. It was so successful. It's just a great opportunity for the seniors to come in. So, it's going to be held Friday, November 20th, at the Senior Center from 1:00 to 3:00. And just a reminder, dogs need to be on leashes and cats in carriers. And it's a great opportunity to come in and get a number of different services, including free veterinary exam, free rabies and dyspeia vaccines, free flea treatment if requested, free nail trim, free toy for every participant, free leukemia test for cats, and free heartworm test for dogs. And there's also going to be information available for Spain and New England. So, it's a great program. We're grateful that they come to the Senior Center. We're looking forward to having them, and we hope our seniors take advantage of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I know a cat needs some trimming.
Are you giving away your age?
Whoa, excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. There's no table items for tonight. We have Board of Selectmen member items. And by Mr. Carpenter, the first one, researching the potential of a conservation fund fee and request the Board to support to ask for a report. Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, it's really not much more involved than that. This is something that is in the current master plan. It was considered, I think I mentioned this at a Board meeting previously. And at the time, of course, timing being everything, the Board had just signed a new contract. So, we were a day late and a dollar short, literally. So, it is unfinished business in the master plan. I would like to see us try and do that, rather than, as some have suggested, increase taxes or have us chase, you know, other priorities. So, I would appreciate it if the Board would support my request that the Town Accountant research this for us.
I guess, to be specific, what are you asking the Town Accountant to, or the CFO to, what, ask him to research?
Well, we have reports. We need to find out the mechanics of how to do it, if we want to do it. I mean, this is a long way from saying, let's do it. This is foundational information. We got this, I believe it was last meeting, Ed had given us some information, and I forget the item, but with some citations, so I would refer to everybody to take a look at those, because they are interesting. But to try and create a fund so that we can take care of, whether it's 61A, if we have another one come before us, to bank money for that. I know there's been many suggestions, both at the Open Space Committee and at this Board, for the necessity for more playing fields. We do have some rather wild properties that people would like to see trails be put on them. I know we also have a grant for trails currently, and they're going to need to be maintained. So, this could be a potential source to maintain these very valuable assets.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Mr. Kastenovich?
Yes, I may. So, just to be clear, because there is a mechanism that would allow for the raising of such funds through the adoption implementation of a CPA fund, which is raised through general taxation. Is that part of what you're looking for? I know there was a discussion on a fee for the golf course green fees. Is that in the equation, or I just don't know what's on or off the table?
Happy to sit down with you, but the CPA I don't see as a viable option. The reimbursement rates are not where they were. I was involved in some groups back when that was a hot issue, and there was no appetite in the town at the time. And I, after tonight, and from what I'm hearing from residents, the appetite for more taxation is absent. Not that it's ever robust, but I think we need to find a way to fund some of these items by, whether it's you're using Pappas, you're renting Pappas, there's a dollar that goes into a fund. Maybe it goes specifically for Pappas, maybe it goes for other issues. I don't know the answers to that. I do know that when we brought it up, we had a fairly skilled attorney in municipal law, Mr. Larry Broder, who was a member of our committee, and he thought placing it on a round of golf was a great idea. And anybody who knows his history with the town, he used to be the town administrator, and he knows municipal law quite well. So, but keeping in mind that that was done some years ago, and there may have been some interceding laws that may have changed the complexion. So, that's what I'm looking for, just to see if we can do anything.
Mr. Kastenovich?
Is there a goal in mind in terms of value of the fund? Are we talking thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions?
I like where you're going with that. Millions is, you know, $3 million would be great. Unfortunately, we're several years too late for South Old Road. But I have no specific goal in mind, because first of all, we have to find out, can we do it, and what are the mechanics? So, to me, I wouldn't be looking to say, this is the ultimate number, and after that, we're just going to say, we don't need anymore. I think anytime you bank money for community uses, I think we've seen some substantial investments that have benefited the community greatly and have made us, made many of our communities or surrounding us rather envious of what we have. So, I just want to be able to try and see if we can find a funding mechanism outside of taxation, if we need to replace artificial turf, if we need to, there's been discussion as far as inadequacy of parking up at Pappas. That's a big-ticket item. That's not something that we can just, you know, raid some account and, you know, it's not a $10,000 item, so.
We do have a conservation fund that has been in place. It was adopted by the Board of Town Meeting years and years ago. I think there's a balance of $6,000 in there, because I think at one point, it was used to help support matching funds for grants that may have been applied for. So, there is a fund in place. I think the question is a mechanism to feed that over a period of time that will allow you to get some things done. So, I'd be happy to explore that for you and try to identify some different options. Probably will require some consultation with Department of Revenue to find out what's allowed, what's not allowed. So, I'm sure there are some parameters already in place. I'll try to get that back to the Board as quickly as possible.
Would you make that a motion, please?
I would make the motion that we ask for a report as generally outlined, but not specifically outlined, to ask the Town Accountant to research with DOR, and I believe in the report, you all said you might need to talk to Town Council.
I think in the context that we talked about, that related to adding a fee onto the golf course.
Okay.
And I think initially, I said that I don't think it would be allowable under the enterprise method of accounting, because it had to be used solely for the activity that the money is being charged for. I can go that route, but I'm not so sure that, and I think that's why I reached out early on to find out if that's, you want me to explore that as well?
No, if you don't, I will leave it to your discretion. I'll leave it at DOR, and I'll cut the cord there.
Okay. Motion been made.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just one more under discussion. I just want to be sure that our CFO has clear direction on this motion, and also, I'll mention that Mr. Carpenter said I'm happy to sit down with you. So, if you can sit down with Mr. Carpenter, just, I don't want you out there just trying to figure out what you need to do and bring us back a report that wasn't ours. So, I'd like to see Mr. Carpenter sit down, talk with you, and then keep it, the DOR. Cut it at that cord.
Okay. Well, now that I know that the CPA is not part of the consideration, raising funds through general taxation, although short of a user-added fee, the only area that rarely this money can come from is through general fund appropriation, which is either through taxation or general fund revenue. So, those are the kind of things I need to explore with the OR to see what's allowed and what's not.
As much as I agree with it, we were really stung and strung on by this property on South Old Road. It has put us in a position with taxes that we really did not want to be in, and it kind of showed tonight exactly what those numbers were going to be. And I think that if we could come up with something like that, maybe a rainy day fund of something, we could probably help our town out. As much as I hate to say, you know, find a tax or find another way to get some money, it may help us down the road for, even with the policies, the financial policies we have, make the investment, put it in as a bank account, let it build so that if in case we have these issues come up, like our famous South Old Road issue, at least we have something to lean on, so we don't have to go back to the taxpayers and hit them as hard as it has been this time through. So, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Okay. And then, by Mr. Holstrom. We have a recommendation referred to Subcommittee, discussion of development of a policy concerning proclamations. I think it's important. I think, as we discussed tonight, we're sending a letter to a ribbon cutting event, and I think that there are some places where we have to tweak this proclamation business. And I'd like to send it, to recommend to send it to the Subcommittee, to have a policy drafted so that we can look into, you know, to what extent we want to send a proclamation and to, you know, just have some kind of guidelines. I don't know, I'll leave it up for discussions of Board, but I think that's pretty much, we've already discussed a little bit of it tonight with the one proclamation. We're going to send a letter now instead. So, there is some tweaking we should do, and I think that, you know, it should be for a very good and just cause and not just, you know, an ongoing, you know, business and type of thing.
I'll make that motion for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, motion been made and seconded to send to the Subcommittee to draft a policy on proclamations. Is there any further, Mr. Carpenter?
I would just ask that we, as a Board, before we send it to the Subcommittee, because I don't necessarily think it is fair to the Subcommittee to divine what we want, much like the remote participation, I would like us to at least have some discussions at the Board level to try and give some sort of definition. And then, the Committee, the Subcommittee would have something to work on, rather than have them having to divine what we want and then bringing it back.
Well, that, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we've had, you know, pretty much had some excellent feedback in regards to whether it's different categories, whether it's a letter, a proclamation, a recognition. I feel confident that we've had enough input from the Board to bring at least a draft policy forward.
Okay.
A start, you know, a starting draft policy.
Okay. So, we're going to send this to the Subcommittee. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we've had, you know, pretty much had some excellent feedback in regards to whether it's different categories, whether it's a letter, a proclamation, a recognition. I feel confident that we've had enough input from the board to bring at least a draft policy forward.
Okay.
A start, you know, a starting draft policy.
Okay. So we're going to send this to the subcommittee. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm happy to support the motion if the chair of the subcommittee has indicated that she feels that she has enough information to, so she's not stabbing in the dark and Mrs. Brotherton isn't stabbing in the dark and then coming back and hearing us give our critique.
So the motion's been made and seconded to send this to the subcommittee and to report back at some future meeting, when you're prepared.
We will get it scheduled as soon as we coordinate our cameras.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Now, is there any, with the public, any public comments?
Yes, a public comment.
Just have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. The first one is regarding the way that our last meeting ended. It's not the first time this has happened. So I'm not going to make a big deal out of it, but I'm just going to say that no member of this board at any time should feel singled out, threatened, or whatever. And it is the role of the chair or vice chair to speak up and stop anyone who is singling out any member of this board. Anyone is willing, anyone is welcome to disagree with any of us. That's part and parcel of government. I have no problem with that, any way, shape, or form. But specifically calling out people shouldn't be tolerated. We've talked about that.
Mr. Simon, before you continue, I just want to address that. At that meeting, I would have addressed that and would have stopped that right away if I'd known that there was a personal attack or if there was anybody that was singled out for any comments one way or another. And I think you're referring to the Finance Committee Chairman, who had made some comments about, let the managers manage. And I didn't hear any names. I didn't hear any fingers, see any fingers pointed. I saw nothing. It was, and if there was, I would have stopped the writing there, because I would not have.
I'm going to disagree with you, because he started his comments directed specifically at me and comments I had made, and he ended his comments directed specifically at Mr. Carpenter and comments he had made.
Okay.
So he called out two members.
We disagree with that.
By name. And it is what it is. I'm just saying.
Okay, and your next item?
And the last, and the second thing is, I just quickly want to apologize to the town meeting members. So apparently for the second town meeting in a row, the moderator disrupted me while I was speaking to town meeting, because he felt that he was, in his words, unable to understand me. So I'm just going to apologize to town meeting and make a promise to you that from now on, when I address town meeting, I will use smaller words and speak slower, so that there's no more interruptions that I, because I'm not understood. Thanks.
Is there any other comments? Ms. Jacobson.
I just wanted to give the board, mostly the residents, just a quick update on municipal aggregation. We did receive quite a few calls to the office today. The letters were mailed out from Constellation, who was the selected energy supplier. And the letters were mailed out last Thursday. A number of residents contacted our office today, as they did Colonial, who's the consultant for us, as to why the letters came from a Texas address. And I just want everyone to know that Constellation is a nationwide company. I'm not sure they actually could be worldwide, but they cover communities all over the country. Their processing center is based in Houston, Texas. So when they are required under municipal aggregation to send out letters to those who are eligible for the program, they come out from their processing center. That's why they have such great capacity to respond to resident concerns and to make sure that they can handle this program. So wanted to let everyone know, yes, it came from Texas. It's not a scam. A very good question. Want to assure everybody that it is legitimate. We have a copy, let me back up, we have a website that we put out on municipal aggregation for residents. And if you click on our homepage, it will say municipal aggregation under how do I or how to. If you click on that, there's a section on FAQs, so frequently asked questions. Please direct residents there. A lot of great information. There's another section there where it says, click here for the letter that went out. So if you're concerned that you didn't get, that the letter was potentially a scam, you can see the exact letter that was sent to everybody on our website and you'll realize that it's legitimate. If it's different than that, then, you know, it's a concern. And lastly, just a reminder that Colonial Power is our aggregator. They are set up, ready to answer questions, and the number's 508-485-5858. We'll answer whatever questions we can in our office, but we're trying to direct the questions to Colonial as well. I'll say.
Just, do you know if all correspondence to residents in the future will come from the same address? So.
With the chair, I would assume it would. If the, any correspondence that comes from Constellation, my understanding is they may do another mailing during the year to catch people who maybe are no longer part of a contract with another supplier. So I would expect that another mailing would go out at some point during the year and probably be from Texas.
If by chance it does come from a different address and we already know it's legit, could we just put that information out there?
We'll put it on our website. We're going to keep this municipal aggregation website up. If anyone did not receive a letter, the reason you didn't receive a letter is because you are not a National Grid basic customer. National Grid basic customers receive the letter. Anyone who has a separate contract for energy supply would not have received the letter. And a lot of questions came in on this, so I'll just make one more comment. It is an opt-out program, so if you receive the letter, there's a tear-out sheet and instructions on how to opt out. Likewise, you may opt in at any time. But we highly encourage you, if you're with another supplier, make sure there's no penalties and fees. You can opt in, but some of these companies do have penalties for getting out early. And again, any questions, please direct them to Colonial. They're experts at it. They're doing a great job. Thanks.
Okay. And I have one more thing. I want to thank all the veterans and I want to thank you all, our active personnel in the military. And I want everybody to take a few minutes this Wednesday, November 11th, and think about those veterans that have gone before us, have made the ultimate sacrifice, and are wearing the uniform today. Thank you all and take a few minutes to think about them. Thank you. And before we get through, we have minutes from the May 11th, 2015 meeting. If there are any comments or concerns over this, I'll accept it as presented and I'll entertain a motion.
motion returned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.